Tuesday, December 3rd is in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And in conformance with the open meeting law, I'm letting you know that this meeting is being livestreamed. Thank you for trudging through the snow and making it today. So we hope that we'll have a smooth meeting this morning. If you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, when you have a turn at the mic, please give us new information because we are fact-finding and we need you to help us get new information. If somebody has already stated your concern or your reason for support, put your name and address on the record so we register that you're here. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of November 12, 2019. We need a motion? Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The first case is an extension, case BOA 594-105-157 Cottage Street. Is Cottage Street here?
Okay.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Skagliola regarding 157 Cottage Street in East Boston. This is for an extension to increase living space from my first floor to the basement by enlarging the living room.
So when was this approved?
This was approved in December of initially '16.
December 16, and then did you have an extension since then, subsequent?
I had an extension December of '18.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this extension expires December 9, 2019, a couple of days away.
Okay. So we are loath to give too many extensions. So we would expect that the work would begin with this extension, and we generally give one-year extensions. Okay? So may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Calling the next case for G Card, calling BOA 101-6770-121 St. Stephen Street. St. Stephen Street here? I'm going to call the next case for G Card, case BOA 101-5980-374 to 382 Congress Street. This is to erect a entry trailer structure and construct an outdoor patio seating service here for the use of the Pink Taco Restaurant. Violation Article 32, Section 4, G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Joyce, Starview War Office, 50 Franklin Street, Boston, for the applicant.
Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we do have the no-harm letter from the applicant.
Motion to approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have the letter in the file?
Yes, we do.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do you want to take care of the St. Stephen Street? It's the G Card, or do you want to wait?
Let's go ahead.
All right. Calling the building code.
No, let's go ahead with the G Card.
Oh, you do want to go?
Yeah.
So I'll call it into the record one more time. BOA 101-6770-121 St. Stephen Street. This is a foundation structural repairs per structural engineer, pointing repairs, exterior masonry, new roof upgrade. Violation Article 32, Section 4, G Card applicability.
Christian.
We do have a letter here.
Go ahead, Christian.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we also have the BBOIC approval letter.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the first case for building code, calling BOA 101-5627-920 to 926 Morton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
920 St. Morton Street, Mother Pond.
Okay. This is to change the legal access from a store to two retail stores, restaurant and beauty salon. The violation is the ninth edition 780 CMR. An automatic sprinkler system shall be installed throughout all stories including basements of all buildings where the floor area exceeds 1,500 square feet and where there is not provided, not fewer than, one of the following types of exterior wall openings. 1.1 openings below grade that lead directly to the ground level by an exterior stairway complying with Section 1011 or outside ramp complying with Section 1012. Openings shall be located in each 50 linear feet or a fraction thereof of an exterior wall in the story of at least one side. The required openings shall be distributed such that the lineal distance between the adjacent openings does not exceed 50 feet. I've already asked for a name and address.
So sir, are you still requesting that building code relief?
It's a what?
Are you still requesting that relief?
Yeah, it's for the restaurants.
So why can't you provide the sprinkler system?
Yeah, it has been done already.
It has been done?
Yes.
And so you don't need the relief, then?
Well, everything has been done, but it has been holding for so long, so that is why we came to court.
I'm sorry?
It has been on hold for so long.
I see. I see. Okay. But you've done everything. Everything's good. Okay. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, then.
Thanks.
Calling the next building code. Case BOA 101-5422-411, Sharmet Avenue. This is to add a new roof deck, spiral staircase, brand-new skylight opening to replace roof and renovate the bathroom. The violation is ninth edition 780 CMR 1011 and stairways. Roof access where stair is provided to a roof, access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse complying with Section 1510.2. Access through the roof hatch is not permitted. The ninth edition 780 1011 stairways, 1011.3 headrooms, spiral stairway complying with Section 1011 and 10, and a 78-inch headroom clearance. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Adam Grassi from Huck Design, 428 Fourth Street, Portland, Maine.
So tell us specifically why you need this relief?
I'll shorten a long story as much as I possibly can. I'm distributing handouts right now that include photos, plans, and elevations of the project. We're proposing this roof deck. We ran into trouble during permitting. We received a zoning denial due to Article 64, Section 32, South End roof deck restrictions. I've highlighted a relevant passage that we got tonight for.
Speak up a little bit, having a hard time here.
Yes, I can. I'm sorry. We are denied specifically on zoning basis for the following passage, which reads, "Access is by roof hatch or bulkhead no more than 30 inches in height above such deck."
So why?
This is a peculiar situation in which we're accessing this roof from a spiral stair from an exterior deck below. So the interpretation by ISD was that because we have neither hatch nor bulkhead, then we do not qualify. Our solution was to put a hatch at the top of this spiral stair that we're proposing, which led to a head height violation from the building code. We're appealing that due to the fact that this hatch is not watertight. It will not lock. It's very, I mean, to be fair, it's to comply with the hatch restriction. I think it's clear in the zoning code that the intent of this passage, item C, is to say that it's to limit the height of a hatch or a bulkhead, not to mandate that there is a hatch or a bulkhead. So we're trying to provide this solution and appeal the building code in kind.
Now, we need a little bit more, a little bit of time now that you've given us the handout, a little bit of time to go through this.
Uh huh.
So may we have a motion for the deferral? Are you available at the next meeting?
I can, if you'd like to walk through it. At the moment, we can do so.
No, I...
I'm going to make a motion for the deferral. We'll have you...
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll have you for a date of 17...
12/17.
17.
We just need a little bit more time just to do an analysis on this, okay?
I understand.
So we'll see you then at 9:30 on the 17th.
Want to take a vote on the deferral, though?
Oh, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for the deferral.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Call the 9:30 cases for deferrals or withdrawals. Counselor address, please.
49 Charter Street.
For the record, calling BOA 957-171-4949, our Charter Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Daniel Toscano from Dragonguard Toscano, 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. We respectfully seek in a deferral in this matter. We made a last, a recent change to the architectural plans to address one of the neighbors' concerns. I think it's going to have an effect on the zoning code. Plans were filed, so we're just waiting for a new refusal letter, so seeking a quick deferral.
Can you have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of February 25th at 11:30.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? You deferring? I'll do it now. Address, please.
100 Lexington Street.
For the record, calling BOA 998-963-100 Lexington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
What are you requesting?
Deferral, I'm sorry. I apologize, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We also have a date of February 25th as well at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing number, call the first case, calling BOA 961-1472-210, Bremen Street. This is to amend and to include a roof deck. Violation is Article 27T-5. This is in the East Boston iPod and Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me is Scott from here, he's the architect for the project. Madam Chair, very straightforward proposal here. This is a pre-existing three-family dwelling that has undergone a complete renovation of the interior and the exterior of the building. That was done as a matter of right under a long form that issued. Part of that project also included and contemplated the addition of a roof deck. That roof deck would be exclusive to the upper unit only, Unit 3. It would be accessed from a staircase to the rear of the building. No hatch or headhouse being proposed. With respect to the violations that this would create, because the roof deck is set towards the rear of the building, it would be within the rear yard setback as a structure, and therefore relief for rear yard setback would be necessary, although it would be located entirely within the footprint of the roof. And then, of course, anything that alters the roof line in the East Boston neighborhood district would be currently subject to the iPod provisions of the zoning code.
What's the dimension of the roof deck?
It's 10 feet by 10 feet.
Okay. 10 feet square, and it's access through spiral stair from the rear deck?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans? Mr. Candell, any questions from the board?
Yeah, there's no connection between the decks, right?
No, correct.
From the second to the third?
There is an odd condition where the abutter has a stair that attaches to the property, to the deck in the back, but that would be not included as far as any type of egress element. So it is strictly for that unit, to answer your question.
And there is a second means of egress that's not the decks?
The building is an F P, excuse me, it's...
Fully sprinkled.
Yes, fully sprinkled. Hardline sprinklers, thank you. And it only requires the one means of egress for the unit to travel, so it's working.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support during the community process. There were no concerns from the abutters. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrone from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next case, calling BOA 997-894-37 Horace Street.
Madam Chair, I'm going to accuse myself.
This is to raise the existing building combined lots, to create one lot consisting of 7,268 square feet, erect a nine-unit residential dwelling with parking for 14 vehicles. The violation is Article 27T, Section 9. This is in the East Boston iPod applicability. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive, number of stories. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard isn't sufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard isn't sufficient. And Article 53, off-street parking isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me is Joseph Trakilo. He's the owner of the property located on Horace Street. Also with me is Tim Lorander, who is the architect with Embark Studio.
Just for one minute. Just for the record, I'd like to note Mr. Devoe is recusing himself on this project.
Thank you. Madam Chair, as the secretary indicated, this involves the demolition of existing three-family dwelling. I provided the board with a packet of information that shows existing current conditions. The three-family dwelling is in very, very tough shape. It would require a substantial amount of investment. There is adjoining, there are adjoining lots with respect to this site that can be combined to create a larger lot. We've worked very closely with the surrounding neighborhood, including the direct abutters, on coming up with a proposal that we feel fits with the Harborview neighborhood, which is where this property is located. Chief among those concerns was the height of the building, as well as the amount of parking spaces that would be associated. This is intended to be a homeownership project with nine condominiums upon completion. With respect to the layout and the program of the building, as you can see from the plan, we do have access off of Horace Street that would allow for nine parking spaces to be located under the building. Each one of those parking spaces would be assigned to one individual unit. Mr. Trakilo does own nearby property as well. We have shown the neighborhood the possibility of adding additional parking. There was mixed reviews on that. However, we do feel that if that opportunity present itself, we will pursue adding additional parking space. With respect to this proposal, nine of the parking spaces would be associated with the condominium. As I mentioned, the other chief concern amongst the neighborhood was the height of the building. There has been a lot of development as of late in the Harborview neighborhood, and maintaining a three-story dwelling was something that was indicated very early on in this process. I think Embark has done a superb job of designing a building that fits contextually with the surrounding neighborhood, and I think that's reflected in the number of letters of support that we have submitted from direct abutters, as well as neighborhood residents, who originally were, had concerns about this project. With respect to the unit count, as I said, this is a nine-unit project. It's a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, three bedrooms being included, again, based upon commentary that we heard through the community process. The range and size of the units go from about 720 square feet from the smallest one-bedroom up to about 1,400 square feet for the larger three-bedroom. There are three roof decks associated with this. Those are exclusive to each of the units that are located on the upper level. We did have, as I said, the opportunity to present this to the neighborhood in depth. This went before the Harborview Neighborhood Association, as well as a number of abutters meetings where the concerns were continuously tweaked with respect to the project. And again, I think that's reflected in the number of support letters that we have submitted to the board. With respect to the relief that's necessary, this is in a 2F 2000 zoning district. However, combining these lots would provide a lot that is far in excess of what the minimum lot size is for that neighborhood. Multifamily would not be allowed in the 2F district. However, there is significant precedent throughout this particular area for multifamily use, especially where there's associated parking at at least a one-to-one ratio. So we are requesting a variance for that. We do meet the minimum lot size, the minimum lot width, the front yard and the side yard requirements. Our rear yard would be, depending upon how we viewed the front of this building, would require relief. 30 feet is required in the 2F district. We are at 20 feet if we front the building along Neptune Circle. However, there was a preference to see the building have a front entranceway along Horace Street. So we are requesting relief for the rear yard. Our floor-to-air ratio has been reduced throughout the community process. We are down to 1.22, which is very consistent with the surrounding densities of homes in this area, and again, something that the neighborhood felt was an important step towards making this project viable. So we are requesting a variance for that as well. Although the height limit is 35-foot maximum, we are slightly above that at 36 feet. There is a 2.5-story limit. However, the adjoining properties located immediately adjacent on Horace Street are three families in the existing structure that's on the property as a triple-decker now, so we feel that that is consistent with the context. Last but not least is parking. If this were proposed new nine units, there would be a requirement to have a total of 13 parking spaces. As we said, this is a propose at nine spaces. We are providing one space per unit, which is something that's probably not very typical for that neighborhood. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Tell us again about the roof decks?
Roof decks are exclusive to the upper units. They are accessed by...
Hatch?
Hatch. Hatch internal stairs. Hatch internal stairs.
Tell us, Mr. Candell.
Tell us.
Any questions from the board?
I'm sorry? Just from the plans, it looks like you're paving over almost the entire lot. Is that accurate?
How much open space are we adding or including? We're adding about 50% lot coverage. That's the covered area, the parking, not the access drive.
And then the building also covers, so how much green space is left?
On the ground floor, we have that actual lot. Yeah. We do have about a five-foot setback on the Neptune and the rear and the front, where we're adding a landscape buffer, so that will all be green. And then there's an additional piece, portion of the lot that's behind the additional parking that we will be landscaping and using as a catch basin. So if I could just clarify that, there is a lot, if you look at the BPDA abstract showing the lots that are involved with the proposal, there is a miscellaneous lot located to the rear of the property on Moore Street. That is vacant and will remain open. We've come to an agreement with the owner of the property on Moore Street to create a landscape easement for that site. We will pay to landscape and have the property cleared and brought up to, you know, I guess a better condition. And the neighbor has asked for permission to continue to maintain that as part of his backyard. We've agreed to do that with that particular neighbor.
And that's a recorded easement, or just...
We will record that as an easement. That's correct.
So is it to the exclusive use of the abutter, or is they used by the residents of this building?
No, it'd be for the abutter, but it's not contiguous to our particular site, but it is, it was included in the acquisition. It doesn't make necessarily a lot of sense for us to have it because of the lack of contiguity, but we were requested during the process to consider making that open space for the neighbor, and we've agreed to that, and we'll do so.
It benefits one individual, whereas the residents of this building, you know, these three of the units have access to roof decks, but the rest of the residences have their tiny decks.
Yeah, understood.
Okay. Did you have a question?
No, just a comment. There was over 45 letters of support. No, no opposition.
Okay. Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support during the community process. The applicant were close with the abutters and addressed most of the concerns. Also, there was a strong support from the direct abutters and some members of the Harborview community. There was appreciation of bringing three family units to the community because they will bring families, and also received 27 letters of support from the abutters. Thank you.
My name is Deborah White. I'm a neighbor, and I support this project.
My name is Christopher Snow, 18 Neptune Circle, and I'm fully in support of this project.
I live in 38 Horace Street across from the new project, and I'm supporting the project.
My name is Michael Perato, 96 Moore Street. I approve the project.
My name is Nathan Qualls, 98 Moore Street. I also support this project.
Is everybody having a difficult time hearing this morning? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we do have one letter of opposition from the neighbor.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 998-964-38 Lexington Street. This is to raise the existing building erect a four-unit residential dwelling with rear roof decks and parking in rear. Violation Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod, Article 53, Section 57. Side yard with driveway should be not less than 10 feet. Article 53, Section 8, MFR is forbidden in the 2F sub-district. Article 53, Section 56, proposed parking is insufficient, six faces provided. Article 53, Section 56.5, off-street parking maneuverability. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio was excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard isn't sufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yard isn't sufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me is Ricky Bellevue from Volnay Capital. Also with me is Eric Zacherson, the architect for the project from context.
Just for a minute, please. For the record, Mr. Bruggerio has recused himself. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, this project is located in the Eagle Hill section of East Boston. It involves the existing, an existing single-family dwelling that we are proposing to demolish and erect a four-story, four-unit dwelling with parking for a total of three vehicles. This will contain all two bedrooms. The unit sizes are just over 1,000 square feet for each unit. We are also proposing to provide three off-street parking spaces with respect to the project. As I said, because this is located in the Eagle Hill neighborhood, and I provided the board with a packet of information showing the design that has been worked with very well with the Eagle Hill community, part of their concern is the appearance of buildings that get constructed, especially when a building is being demolished in place of a new development. We feel that Eric's design and rendering here is exactly what the Eagle Hill neighborhood requests when they see projects being proposed, and we feel that this works very well with the historic character and nature of the Eagle Hill community. We did have an opportunity to present this several times to the Eagle Civic Association, who did vote in support of this. I do have a letter of support from Eagle Hill, as well as a number of letters from direct abutters and neighbors who also support this project. With respect to the relief that's necessary, this is also located in a 2F 2000 district. A variance would be required for multifamily use. As you can see from the context photos that we've provided, there are numerous multifamilies in this section of Eagle Hill. This is, this borders along the MFR district, which is located about 100 yards away at Meridian Street. So we do request relief for the multifamily at four units. Our lot size is sufficient. We do have 2,500 square feet. The minimum is 2,000, and our lot width is also sufficient at 25 feet, which is the minimum amount required. We do require relief for the side yard, on the left side yard. There is an existing condition where there's almost no setback. We're going to maintain that plane. We've worked closely with the abutter to the left to ensure that that is something that was acceptable and there's no issue. And I believe they're actually written a letter of support for this project based upon how we've worked with them. In addition, we do require rear yard setback. We are set at twenty-four point three feet. For this particular neighborhood, a thirty-foot setback would be necessary. We feel that the use of the space for parking was something that the neighborhood felt was critical. We always, when it comes to Eagle Hill, offer the opportunity to either have open space or parking and ask them what is more preferable. And in this particular case, parking seemed to be more important to that neighborhood. Our Florida ratio is two-point-two-five with a maximum of point eight, so we are requesting a variance for that. However, I would point out the density of the surrounding neighborhood, as shown in the context photos, including the satellite photo of the size of the buildings in that area, is very consistent with the type of FAR that we are proposing. We are at forty-two feet in four stories. That would be in excess of what the Article fifty-three would allow for height. The maximum is three stories, thirty-five feet. However, referring back to the design, as well as what presently exists in the neighborhood, we feel this works very contextually with that side of the street. In fact, the existing single-family is probably somewhat out of character, out of place with what presently exists. We are proposing a total of three parking spaces, as indicated. We would require four-point-two-five technically with a new construction. However, because we are close to a public transportation line, the Eagle Hill Civic Association also felt that three was an appropriate number of parking spaces for the site. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
So how does the access to the parking lot, is it directly off of Lexington?
It's off of Lexington. There is a common shared accessway between the building to the right and our building. So the amount, the amount of width is sufficient for driveway purposes, but that is by way of easement.
So this is on the last photo, second to last photo where that vehicle is? Is that the shared access?
That's correct. That's the way we would access the driveway.
And it's been memorialized at the registry?
It's already pre-existing access.
And are there decks? Yes, you did say there's decks. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Candell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, I'd add one item. So the Eagle Hill Civic Association did specifically request that we eliminate the roof. We did have a roof deck and a headhouse that has been eliminated from the proposal, and that was at the request of the Eagle Hill. I'd just like to put that on the record.
Mr. Candell, should this pass, we should put a note on that, to that. So you're here to speak in support. Please put your name and address on the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support during the community process, the developer addressed most of the concerns of the abutters and as well Eagle Hill Civic Association voted in support of this proposal. And we received twenty letters of support from direct abutters and from members of the Eagle Hill community. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would like to go on record in support of this proposal. She'd also like to go on record in support of a thorough review by the Landmarks Commission prior to the demolition of the existing structure.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Council of Asabi Georgia's office would like to go on record of support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have about the same amount of letters. I think there might be duplicate twenty-some-odd letters in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we do have one letter of non-support as well.
Good morning. My name is Dan Bailey. I live at seventy-three Utah Street in Eagle Hill. Setting aside the fact that there's no evidence of hardship in this case, this is a destructive proposal inherently. It involves demolition of a historic house that was built in the eighteen forties. It's a modest worker's cottage, but it's also worth preserving. It's served as a home for East Boston families for a hundred and seventy-five years, and there's no reason that it couldn't continue to serve as a home for East Boston families in the future. This building connects us to the neighborhood's past. It's one of the last vestiges of historic architecture on this block and contributes to the unique sense of place in East Boston. I'd ask that you please don't kick this can on this and leave it to landmarks to decide. Landmark does not have the authority to prevent demolition of this building, but this board does. The proposal should also conform to the intent and purpose of the code, and the historic nature of this building is relevant to the code. The code is, really couldn't be more clear about its intent in terms of preserving historic structures. And Article fifty-three, section fifty-one point two, subsection D, reads the removal or alteration of any historic architectural feature should be held to a minimum. Presumably, that would include the removal of an entire historic house. Subsection Q, design features of a proposed project should enhance and reinforce any historic qualities of existing structures, which presumably precludes demolishing historic structures. We also need to consider the context here. So this, East Boston has had the highest number of demolition applications in the city. It's tied with Dorchester despite being half the size. And most of the homes targeted for demolition are three-deckers and single families, which have traditionally served as family housing in the neighborhood. If we're systematically eliminating family housing, we're certainly going to impact the makeup of the community. And since we have an ongoing planning process in East Boston, I think it makes sense to exhibit some restraint here when we're making irreversible decisions about demolishing neighborhood fabric. There's also a steep environmental cost to demolishing and replacing structures like this. It's estimated that demolishing and replacing a house contributes four and a half times more greenhouse gas emissions than renovating the existing home. And it takes between ten and eighty years even for a new green building to make up for the greenhouse gas emissions associated with its construction. We simply don't have time to wait decades to reduce greenhouse gas emissions when the city has committed to becoming carbon-free by 2050. Of course, these are all big issues, preserving historic resources and reducing the environmental impact. And this is a relatively small project, but it's one of hundreds like it. And we need to begin taking a stand against this kind of destructive development, so I hope you will reject this proposal. Thank you.
Can you respond to the demolition delay?
I can, Madam Chair. And I certainly have a great amount of respect for Mr. Bailey. I've dealt with him on a number of projects in the East Boston community, and I appreciate his passion for preservation. I want the board to understand that the term historic does not mean landmark.
I understand, but how old is the building?
So any building, just as a general rule, any building that's over fifty years old in the city of Boston requires approval under Article eighty-five. So although he is encouraging this board to exercise restraint, it's the Landmarks Commission itself that does have the actual jurisdiction under the zoning code to determine whether or not a building is significant. That is a process that we will be required to undertake regardless of what this board votes on.
Have you applied for demolition delay?
We do not until such time as the zoning approval has occurred because we do need to present to the Landmarks Commission what the plan is for the site. It makes no sense to submit something for demolition delay before any approval is even granted because that presents a situation where a developer simply could go into Landmarks Commission and start talking about demolishing buildings for no other reason than just for the sake of demolishing them. The Landmarks Commission would like to see a plan of what you propose. In fact, we have to show alternatives to demolition if there is a determination that there is significance, but we've not even reached that threshold yet. And at some point, we go through this process as anybody would that is demolishing a building in the city. The difference and the distinction is important. If this were a designated landmark, this would be an entirely different process, and the Board of Appeals would have different jurisdictions.
Can you just give us that jives of what Article eighty-five is and the process? Because I'm just drawing a blank on how, because I know in the past we've seen letters from landmarks about, on demo delay projects.
Yes, but they-
Has something changed administratively?
No, not administratively, but Counselor is correct. Landmarks does not entertain applications for demolition just purely for the sake of demolishing a building. They want to see what's going to happen, and he is right. He wants to see alternatives. Demolition to the Landmarks Commission is the last resort. So yes, plans need to be presented to the Landmarks Commission so that they can make a determination, you know, that they can issue a permit or not issue any sort of delay on it. They can't just, they will not entertain an application for blank demolition.
And if I can add one thing, Madam Chair, just to comment to Mr. Bailey's point about, you know, this board needs to be the sort of gatekeeper of these items. Eagle Hill Civic Association is extremely vigilant when it comes to the demolition of structures in the neighborhood. I've presented cases to them where I've been informed that buildings do have significance beyond what, you know, a developer might believe. And in this particular case, that was not identified by the Eagle Hill Civic Association. And I think is also representative of the fact that we do have a number of letters of support from residents of Eagle Hill who otherwise have spoken up previously when buildings were put forward. And I know there's other examples of that. I don't necessarily want to state them here, where buildings, the preference from the neighborhood was for preservation. That does not exist with respect to this proposal, and I think that's an important distinction.
Thank you. Given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion for approval.
Design review?
With design, BPD, design review.
Is there a second?
Just a question. So would this automatically go to landmark review?
It would then go to demo delay.
Before permit, before permit.
Well, any building over fifty years old for any sort of demolition, doesn't matter.
Would there be a note, just a special attention made to this particular building?
It's required to get our building permits. We can't get our building permit.
It's basically a requirement, just like fires.
So I would, I would make a second that pending landmark review with BPDA review.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-zero-one-three-four-seven-two-one-fifty-four Lexington Street. This is to modify deck on the second floor, construct a new roof deck, construct partial addition to align the exterior wall. The violation is Article twenty-seventeen dash five. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section fifty-two, roof structure restriction. Article fifty-three, section nine, the Florida ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, two-forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner and homeowner at one-fifty-four Lexington Street. With me is Scott Chenier. He is the architect for the project from Chewing Company. Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming structure located, also located in the Eagle Hill section of East Boston. This building had undergone a complete renovation, which was intended to convert the building, upgrade the building and convert it to condos. There is a proposal to square off the building towards the rear, as well as add a roof deck that'll be accessed by spiral staircase. Relatively straightforward proposal that did not have significant opposition at all from the neighborhood. And the variances that are being requested are more or less because of the nature of the pre-existing non-conformities that exist presently with the building.
So these are, I'm sorry, this is a three-family dwelling?
Three-family, correct.
Okay. And tell us about that rear addition?
If you want to talk a little bit about it.
So with the rear yard, currently, the first unit is a walk-up, and you come out at grade in the back of the building. Unit two is, has access to an existing deck in the rear of the building, which walks out and stares down to the rear yard. With the reconfig, excuse me, the reconfiguration of the two units, we would have a bedroom in the back of the building. So loss of access to the rear yard from unit two would occur because of access to that deck. It would have to be through the bedroom without the modification of the deck. So what we're doing is we're trying to just retain access to the open space for unit one, unit two. And it's primarily just for access to the rear yard. There is no egress off the back, same as the other building. It's fully sprinkled, and we have the one means of egress, and it works with travel.
What's the square footage of the addition, both on the second and third floor?
So the actual addition is quite small. There's a little forty-five degree jog between the main portion of the building and the front and the smaller addition, well, the small portion of the building in the back. Basically, it just squares off that little forty-five chamfer there just to make the door access a little bit cleaner to the rear yard. And that's really where the violation is coming from because we have a pre-existing, non-conforming, excessive FAR.
And that, what's the distance between the decks and the rear property line?
That is, just one moment.
Twenty-three nine.
Twenty-three foot nine.
Twenty-three foot nine between the deck, the end of, the edge of the deck and the rear property line is twenty-three feet?
Twenty-three foot nine, correct.
Okay. And the roof deck, tell us about that again. It's access wire?
So access is by spiral off of a deck that is also exclusive to the upper unit. It is twelve by twelve, hundred and forty-two square feet. The spiral goes down, accesses off of the rear walkout deck from unit three.
How are the plans, Mr. Candell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. There were no concerns from the abutters during the community process. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. President of the Board, Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Council of Asabi Georgia's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. One letter of opposition. Not on this one. Sorry, I apologize.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You've had a good run this morning.
Please.
Is this, this is your last case?
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-zero-zero-three-nine-zero-eight-two-twenty-four Princeton Street. This is a four-story with a four-unit building, one unit on each story, no parking, exterior stair and rear building, private roof deck. The violation is Article fifty-three, section nine. The lot area for additional dwelling unit is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the Florida ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, height requirement is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the height requirement is excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, section nine, front yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, side yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section eight, a multifamily dwelling units, four units is forbidden use. And Article twenty-seventeen dash five, this is in the East Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linz, two-forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, with me, Ryan Accony. He is the property owner and proponent. Also with me, Eric Zacherson, the project architect. Madam Chair, this project is also located in the Eagle Hill neighborhood, located on Princeton Street in a three-F two-thousand district. It's a pre-existing, single-family dwelling surrounded by numerous multifamily dwellings in and around that section of Princeton Street. Our proposal would be to raise the existing structure and provide a four-story, four-unit dwelling with no parking. And I can explain a little bit about how we arrived at that. This is intended upon completion to be for homeownership, and part of this process included a robust conversation with the direct abutters, many of whom who have written letters of support based upon our changes to this project from where we originally started. As I indicated, this project does not include parking, and there's a reason for that. When we first proposed this project, we proposed it at five units with parking below the building. Parking would be accessed from Princeton Street would require an additional curb cut. There are a number of curb cuts on this side of Princeton Street, and the on-street parking seems to be somewhat of a concern. And elimination of that was not preferential. Part of the suggestion that we heard from direct abutters involved reducing the building from a total of five units, and sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, and to eliminate parking as a compromise. That was indicated by direct abutters to this project when we had a final abutters meeting in October. They were satisfied that we had made that change, and we're happy to proceed in that regard. With respect to the unit sizes, these are all roughly around twelve-hundred square feet. The lower level would have a duplex style with some additional square footage. And as I said, this is located at three-F two-thousand district, therefore multifamily use would not be allowed, and a variance would be necessary. Point out the building immediately adjacent to this building is a six-unit building, and there are a number of four-unit buildings along this block of Princeton Street, so very, very consistent with the context. Because this is in the Eagle Hill neighborhood, we do show a rendering which attempts to capture some of the architectural details that are typical, that are expected in the Eagle Hill neighborhood. We understand that there's probably a little bit more tweaking that will occur through design review should this board approve it. However, we are committed to working with the Eagle Hill design standards, and I believe the BPDA is very familiar with that. We do meet the minimum lot size requirement. This is a twenty-five hundred square foot lot with twenty-five feet of frontage, so no variance is necessary for that. We do require a side yard, a side yard variance on the left side. There is an existing condition of almost zero setback. We are maintaining that condition. The abutter to the left, we worked very closely with very early on in the process, has no objection to that. And we do set the building back at three feet on the right side, which is in excess of the two-point-five feet that is required.
Sorry, tell me about the right side setback?
Right side is three feet.
Yeah, and that will allow the abutter and the owners of this building to completely maintain the building?
So we, yes, three feet should be sufficient to maintain the building, absolutely.
And there's no fire, fire, this is being, this is sprinkled?
This will be fully sprinkled, correct. And our requirement is to be setback for openings on the right side of the building, required to be setback three feet, and we comply with that.
Okay, so there's no building code relief?
No building code relief being requested. The structure itself is located thirty feet from the rear. However, the stairs, which are located in the rear, do encroach somewhat into the set, the rear yard setback, but the building itself has a thirty-foot setback, which is something the neighborhood had requested. Our Florida ratio is two-point-oh-eight. The maximum is one-point-oh in the neighborhood. Once again, in analyzing the design of this building, we had Eric analyze and look at the surrounding context to ensure that we are consistent with the FARs of surrounding buildings, and that's something that we were able to establish.
And what's that shadow locks on the roof? Is that, what is that?
So we are showing a roof deck with a headhouse.
With a headhouse?
With a headhouse. Because this is a four-story building, the building code would require access to be by headhouse, not by hatch. If we're capable of adjusting that, we certainly will do that as part of design review. But this is the initial rendering that was prepared based upon the roof deck. The roof deck is exclusive only to unit three because it is a condominium. We would not make that accessible to the entire building. Overall, our building height is thirty-nine and a half feet. That allows for accessibility at the lower level. We are at four stories, but I would point out that the building immediately to the right was our context for purposes of the height of our building. That is a exposed foundation triple-decker, so it's almost a four-story immediately to the right. And by keeping this at thirty-nine and a half feet, we feel that it will be contextual with that side of Princeton Street. We do have about nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet of open space, twelve-hundred square feet is proposed. By eliminating the parking, we were able to, as I mentioned, sometimes the preferences for open space, sometimes parking. In this case, we did hear a strong desire for open space, and we have preserved that for the rear yard. That will be accessible to the entire building as a courtyard. And then last but not least is the parking. We would be required to provide a total of four-point-five spaces, and we're proposing zero. Happy to answer any questions.
How are the plans, Mr. Candell? Any questions from the board?
Could you walk me through the parking again? They didn't, Eagle Hill didn't want a curb cut?
Yes, Mr. Deville. I can, when we started this project, we did start at five units with parking that would be accessed under the building, and we moved out to the rear portion. In doing so, we'd be eliminating any possibility of a courtyard. In doing so, we'd be eliminating any possibility of a courtyard to the back portion of the yard. Eagle Hill was somewhat indifferent towards parking versus open space. It seemed to be a mix. When we did have the first Abutters meeting, the Butters were very concerned about adding a curb cut to the street because they felt that that would exacerbate an already existing issue. They do recognize that they were okay with seeing something redeveloped on the site. They asked for a smaller building, number of units, and in exchange for reducing, they would support it if we proposed no curb cut on the site and to preserve the open space.
Mr. Counselor, you've had a bunch of packages from you this morning. I'm wondering, since, since, you know, you're involved with a number of these projects, if there's a way that you can help push the designers you work with to give the best quality on all their projects? Because, you know, the last two have gone the extra step, and I understand why, to really, you know, render some, some really nice buildings that will stand, stand the test of time. However, there's one, I'm thinking of Horace Street more directly, you know, where, where it, it feels like it's just any other building. So that's just a note to you to see if there's any way that, you know, through your relationships with these architects that we see improved design before they come to us and not really depend on BPDA design.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the Office of Neighborhood Services held three abutters meeting where the developer were close with the abutters and addressed most of the concerns. Also, we received fifteen letters of support from direct abutters and members of the Eagle Hill community. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have fifteen letters of support as well.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we have one letter of opposition.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve pending BPDA design review. Just want to highlight, the design as it stands now is very nice. It's not, deviate too much from it, but motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA, nine nine three nine four zero, sixty to sixty-six, Cambridge Street. This is to increase an existing open-air parking lot from one hundred and ninety-three vehicles to four hundred and thirty-one vehicles and demo the existing warehouse building. Violation Article sixty-two, Section seventeen, parking lot is conditional use in an L-one sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Stephen Miller, McHenry, Brooklyn, Delaware. My name is Eddie Allen, he's owner of the property, the Owens family, and a traffic consultant.
Jeffrey Durk with Vanessen Associates.
We're seeking your approval, Madam Chair, members, for an expansion of an existing conditional use for an open-air parking lot, which is currently licensed for one hundred and ninety-three vehicles, to four hundred and thirty-one vehicles. The lot is currently under lease to Boston Public Schools and has been used for a number of years for school buses, so for an extensive period, there were well over a hundred buses that were parked at this site that came and went on multiple times a day. The Boston Public Schools has found other use and has requested that we, that we could terminate the lease. We've been able to locate another corporate tenant, one that doesn't own a business in Everett, a corporate tenant that could use the spot or their employees and run shuttle buses. We've had extensive meetings with the community. I'd like to point out both the Neighborhood Services and Councilor Edwards' office was outstanding in bringing the community together to discuss the use of this site. And as part of those discussions, the community, the removing the school buses, which at this point, the mechanics and the cleaners or whatever arrive at those premises at four AM, and a lot of nights, the buses get back late. So removing the school buses is a significant benefit to the community.
Is this, is this essentially going to be a nine-to-five use of this?
Yes. Well, a little bit earlier, probably, you know, seven-thirty to eight o'clock, and then five o'clock to five-thirty.
And free on weekends?
Free on the weekends, so as, as part of the process and the community process and dealing with Neighborhood Services in, in the community, there would be, the building that's on the site would be demolished. There would be new fencing, new lighting, full security cameras, landscaping, be fully paved. There was brought out as part of the meetings, there was an issue that has arisen on drainage that would be addressed. There was a request for an installation of bike racks, so a few of the, a few of the parking spaces on the plan would, would be taken out for bike racks. Also, the community requested two zip cars on the space, and it would be a gated system with full security, so the only access would be the, the people that were working for the, for the company. Also, what was requested is during inclement weather, which we've agreed to, that we would open the space, the parking space for during snow removal or whatever, overnight parking, that I guess is in, in great demand during snowstorms like we have today. We think that, based on, on the standards for conditional use, this is a far less intensive use for the site, and also would provide significant upgrades to the, the site.
Are there any billboards or anything signage like that on the site?
There is none. There was a plan with the chair, mayor, member for billboard on the site, but we, we decided not to go forward with that.
And the plans look like they're very basic. They do not show the extent of your fencing, your screening, your buffering, or anything like that.
Well, we expected that we would be working with BPDA on that, that as part of your approval process.
Yes.
That, that it would be subject to BPDA design review and input.
Usually, but, but you know, it makes sense for us since we are the, the last stop essentially on our process to have something that's more robust so we can understand and give specific direction to the BPDA. Any, how are the plans, Mr. Candell?
Charles, a vote.
Any questions from the board?
So, so with the open-air license you hold, you don't do daily rates, though?
No, 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 this is, this is booked by a corporation. They have full lease of the site. It's only their employee.
And you're still gonna, that open-air license is for daily parking and monthly? You're still gonna hold that license?
We, it would not be used. The site would be a hundred percent controlled by the one tenant, but you still need an open-air license regardless.
This, this is then incumbent for us to, to, to think about, should there be a change in the lease fee, you know, because I know that, for example, there's a outdoor parking on Melmea Cass, and every time they come through, we talk to them about screening and buffering, and of course, we're going to do screening and buffering, and I don't see it in my daily trips by that, that lot. So we just need to make sure that, in fact, there's some kind of control for us to make sure that the maintenance of it happens in some way. Did you have a question?
No, I think Joe, Joe asked the same kind of question I was gonna ask.
Bob, does, when, when these sites are leased, does the BPD look at screening, buffering, and those things to make sure they're maintained?
Well, actually, Madam Chair, lady, we look at maneuverability, the size of the parking spaces, and when I looked at the plans, there, there wasn't enough detail to see what's going where, and I had some concerns about maneuverability, and some of the sizes of the, of the spaces were not up to snuff.
Two, you had mentioned shuttle buses for this particular tenant.
Sorry.
Shuttle buses? You had mentioned employees parking here, then shuttle buses.
So there would be.
Could you speak to that? How many per day? How many round trips? Is it every ten minutes, every hour, things like that?
So.
It's approximately six to ten, they're estimating, six to ten shuttle buses.
I'm sorry, I'm, just.
Sorry. My name is Ed Owens, Jr. We're anticipating between six to ten shuttle buses. There'll be two shifts, one in the morning and one when employees leave work, so after hours could start three-thirty to five, three-thirty to six.
Ten trips?
Six to ten buses.
Physical buses.
Buses.
And how often would they be coming and going? How often would they be coming and going from the site?
It would just be on demand as people, as people would come in.
I mean, it could be ten, could be twenty, could be fifty a day, could be a hundred a day. We have four hundred parking spots.
Right.
And you're having these shuttle buses go as people show up. That's a very broad answer as to how many times.
There'll be two shifts. So we'll have a morning shift, approximately six-thirty AM to ten AM. The second shift will be late afternoon.
So someone shows up, someone shows up at two PM. An employee for this prospective tenant shows up at two PM, how are they getting to the site?
There would be a bus there, I guess, waiting that handle it. They do have, it will be open on the weekends, there'll be no parking on the weekends because the few people that work on the weekends, they have parking on-site in their building, so it would be totally open. The, the size of the buses, they anticipate would either be twelve or twenty-four, so I would gather in the, in the really peak periods, the twenty-four-person bus would go back and forth as many times as, as necessary to move the people back and forth.
And will somebody be on-site for security purposes?
They have a security.
For personal, personal security?
Yes, they have a security company that will be on-site.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Quinlan Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this proposal. An abutters meeting was held back in September and was lightly attended. There were no major issues at that time. As I said before, there was a previous proposal for a billboard on this site, and that proposal was withdrawn through the community process to what you have before you today. We also submitted a letter of support from State Representative Dan Ryan as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The Council would like to go on the record in strong support of this proposal.
Madam Chair, we do have four letters of support, but we don't have that letter from Representative Ryan, so.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
We have one letter of opposition.
Are there issues that that person raised?
Just traffic.
Okay. May I have a motion, please? Make the motion be, and I know the BPDA committed denial on this.
We did, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. A few years ago, the person who actually made the recommendation on this appeal spearheaded the Rutherford Avenue transportation study and recommended denial.
If I, I, Madam Chair.
And Bob, when this goes to the permitting, what's the term for review, for, for upgrade, for maintenance, whatever?
Well, I asked Jeff to include me in the review process, in the approval process, so I can make sure that I have included in the plans my concerns and make sure that they are, you know, adhered to.
I'm gonna make a motion for approval.
It sounds, I'm just trying to think through what the issues were that were raised. It sounds to me like one was screening and buffering. Two was a review by transportation for the number of spaces, right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Number of spaces. And three, it sounds like it should be to this, this C only.
Yeah.
Now.
But more, no more than three years.
And three years. Okay? Sounds like those are the providers?
Yep.
Is, is there a second to it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, aye.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
And you're opposed? So motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next, calling the next case, calling BOA, one zero one six six nine seven seven, Cook Street. This is an interior gut renovation, an extension of living space to the basement, add a rooftop deck, and replace exterior siding and trim. Violation Article sixty-two, Section twenty-five, the deck exceeds the allowed building height, accesses not through a hatch or bulkhead, and Article sixty-two, Section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robin Parker. I'm with Intent Architects. We're located in Reading, Massachusetts, nine Berkeley Street. Better ones.
Can you tell us what you're proposing to do?
We are, this is an existing two-family in Charlestown. We are proposing to keep it as a two-unit. We are keeping the number of bedrooms also at five, and what we would like to do is to put livable space in the lower level, and once we put livable space in the lower level, we go over the allowed area. That's not the first thing. The second thing is we would also like to put a roof deck. We are no longer having the access hatch. We are actually making the roof deck only accessible from the second floor unit.
How is that gonna be possible?
Oh, it's gonna be possible, they're gonna go out through their, the second unit, they're gonna go out through a lower deck on the roof, there's gonna be a door, and then they're gonna go up to a stair to the roof deck.
And tell us about the basement, what's the floor to ceiling height?
The floor to ceiling height is eight feet. We did some remed, in phase one of this project, we did some remediation to the foundation around the entire perimeter, and we have at least eight foot six of ceiling height, and then I'm assuming we'll have a drop ceiling.
What's the use in the basement?
The use, we'll be putting the two bedrooms in the basement, bathroom, two bathrooms. The second part is with the roof deck because the existing building is already thirty-five feet high. We're gonna be putting the roof deck, the upper roof deck on the mansard roof. It'll be only in the back part of the roof, but we will be exceeding the thirty-five-foot limit.
How are the plans, Mr. Candell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Quinlan Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support of this project. An abutters meeting was held in October, attended by many neighbors who are excited to see this building be rehabilitated. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The Council would also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, the letter I just gave is a letter of opposition.
So it sounds like whoever the contractor is, it sounds as like there's the, an issue with two fifty-three to two fifty-nine Buck Hill.
Can you tell me what the issue is?
There is, in the digging of the basement, for the living space, they broke into the abutters basement wall, and they now have a large hole in it.
During the owners' meeting, they spoke, I believe, Quinlan Locke was there, I believe they spoke with James about that, and they were making, they were going to fix that. It occurred during the remediation for the foundation under, and then he was going to be fixing that and adding soundproofing, because they're also using their lower level as a living space.
Is that correct? In fact, this letter was dated to us October ninth. Has anything happened between October ninth and now to fix the problem?
Yes, Madam Chair, that meeting actually occurred after October ninth, and they did sit down with the contractor at the time and talked through how they were gonna resolve that issue, so.
And has any work been done on that, on fixing?
I believe so, yes. I have not checked back in with the contractor.
Yeah, the meeting was October twenty-third, and they were, there were discussions. There were discussions.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve pending BPDA design review.
Second.
For roof deck?
And then, I understand that the BPDA has requested that...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm taking another wrong case. My bad.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
It's now 10:40. Excuse me. I'm going to call the 10:30 cases. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Address, sir.
My name is John Lyden.
No, address, sir.
Oh, address is 9-11 Catherine Street and 13-15 Catherine Street in Rosedale.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA 978-482-9211 Catherine Street. Companion case, BOA 978-464-13-15 Catherine Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is John Lyden. Address is 5 Caspian Way in Dorchester, Massachusetts, 02125. And this morning, I'd like to request a deferral for these two cases, most immediately because our architect is unable to attend. And then more down the line, we'd like to continue to work with the neighbors to significantly adjust this project.
Thank you. Because we are not terribly enthusiastic about two buildings on the same lot.
Agreed.
So is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We have a date of... It's like the last date of February 25th.
February 25th?
February 25th, correct.
That's fine.
Okay, it's February 25th at 11:30.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Counselor, address, please.
Attorney Peter Lyons.
Address, please.
99 Fulton... Oh, on the property?
Yep.
It's 1449 to 1453 Hyde Park Avenue.
For the record, calling BOA 937-921-1449-1453 Hyde Park Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Peter Lyons, 99 Fulton Street, Boston, Mass.
And what's the reason for the request?
Considering our options on this property, Madam Chairwoman, and we're working with the neighborhood associations and with the abutis at this time, we're trying to come to an agreement with that, and we're looking for a deferral until May.
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Does it make sense for you to withdraw this application and reapply with a real application?
I couldn't hear that.
Does it make sense for you to withdraw this application and then reapply if you're requesting a deferral until the summertime?
I don't believe so, Yamona. We're having, you know, legitimate discussions with the neighborhood.
Okay. So there was a motion. Is there a second? The date, please?
We have a date of May 5th.
May 7.
May 5th.
Is that too early?
May 5th.
May 5th.
Five.
Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo. Fine, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Hearing none, we'll go back to the next case for 9:30s. Calling BOA 971-179-812-Battery Street. This is to construct a roof deck. The violation is Article 54, Section 10. The building height is excessive in feet. And Article 54, Section 18, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lauren Nollmeyer of Graylock Roofing, 60 Johnson Road, Wilmington. We are seeking a variance to construct a roof deck in an area that's previously unpermitted. Graylock Roofing was hired by the Board of Trustees at 812 Battery Street to replace the roof in September of 2018. In the process of doing so, we had to deep... We had to remove an existing roof deck that was not permitted. The roof has since been replaced. We are at the stage of construction where we'd like to reinstall a roof deck. We intend for it to occupy the same footprint as the previous structure.
So the previous structure was not permitted?
Correct.
It was built? And are you the owners of the space?
So I work for Graylock Roofing. We were the contractor hired to do the roofing work. I'm here on behalf of Abacus Builders, who will be constructing the deck, and the Board of Trustees at 812 Battery Street.
Okay. Okay, so tell us about the roof deck. What's the access to the roof deck?
There are two common staircases in each... There's one in each building. They both have access to the common space on the roof. There are headhouses that have direct access onto the roof deck. The staircase leads from both buildings.
And what's the dimension of that proposed roof deck?
It's approximately 19 by 19 with a small section outside of each penthouse for the staircase access.
Okay. And who will have access? Is this for the entire building?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Kandell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. There was an abutis meeting held for this project on August 21st, and they also have the support of the Northam Waterfront Residents Association, as well as the Northam Waterfront Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Chuck Rosselli, excuse me, unit owner and a trustee over the building, also in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 995-641-23UNITY STREET. This is seeking to erect a first-floor rear addition. They have violation Article 54, Section 10, excessive FAR, 3.0 is the max. Article 54, Section 10, insufficient rear yard setback, 10 feet is the minimum. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Daniel Toscano from Drago and Toscano's attorney at law, located at 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. Today, standing before you, representing Douglas Sherray, apologized for not being here. Got a cold this morning due to the weather and school closings, went unable to be here today to join me. He owns this three-family residential dwelling located in the north end of Boston. It's located in the multifamily residential sub-district. In the back of this Unit 1, there's an open patio. What we'd like to do is expand the living space for Unit 1 only and construct a one-floor addition, approximately 180 square feet, by filing the application, we're seeking relief from the FAR, which is the floor area ratio, in the north end of Boston, in the multifamily residential sub-district. It's 3.0. The existing FAR...
You're talking very fastly.
I'm sorry.
So what's the required FAR and what's the proposed?
Required FAR is 3.0.
Okay.
The existing FAR right now is 3.08, and the proposed with the one-story addition for Unit Number 1 would be 3.18. And the rear yard setback is also a violation. We're seeking relief from the rear yard setback, and the multifamily residential sub-district is 12. We are already in violation. We're at 3... We're at 10.2. We're just going back to our property line to probably about 2 inches, so seeking the... Take over the entire property line to the back. Back, you're not going to be able to see this from the street. It's in the back of the property.
Is there a wall or something around the property?
On the right, if you're facing 23 Unity Street, to our right, there is a wall. It's about a 10-foot wall. It's the Old North Church. We have support from the Old North Church. We met with the Reverend over there. They support it as long as we're in agreement that we'll maintain that wall. To the left of us will be the back of Towson Street Properties. We've had four meetings, and there's been no opposition to this proposal.
And to your rear abutis isn't support?
Our rear abutis, it really hasn't weighed in, but we had an abutis meeting, and we met with the Northam Waterfront Residents Association, their two meetings. We met with the Northam Waterfront Neighborhood Council. There's been nothing but support. Every resident in the area, prior to the requirements for the north end, we mailed a letter with advertising all the meetings, and I haven't heard any opposition from the abutis. One of the... One of the rear residences was concerned some access, but they do have access out the back of their property, so we wouldn't interfere with any second means of egress.
How are the plans, Mr. Kandell?
I'm ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We held an abutis meeting for this project on October 10th, and there were no concerns from the abutis. They also have the support of the Northam Waterfront Neighborhood Council, as well as the Northam Waterfront Residents Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lady Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we also have four letters of support from the abutis.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 990-942-131 Appleton STREET. This is original two apartments and two stores on the ground floor. The ground floor was previously two commercial uses. The ground floor was altered prior to the purchase to accommodate three commercial uses. The uses are hair salon, attorney office, and art gallery. No changes to the exterior elevation, change of occupancy to include a third commercial space. The violation is Article 64, Section 8. The hair salon is forbidden use. Article 64, Section 8, an attorney's office, professional office is a forbidden use. And Article 64, Section 8, the art gallery is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Land Hall, 131 Appleton STREET.
Who are you speaking to?
I'm just assisting Land Hall, Ian Taberner.
Can I request both of you, please, to speak up? We're having a hard time hearing today. And that's taping, it's not amplifying, so we will need you to speak up. So tell us about the square footage for each one of these uses, because this is a residential sub-district, and this is just increasing the number of uses that are forbidden. So tell us about the square footage for each one of these uses. And they're all, I assume, on the ground floor?
Yes, they are. The attorney's office on the ground floor had been... Has been there for 26 years. The hair salon, 12 years. And an art gallery, one year, but was previously a jewelry store.
I see. Okay. And... Okay, and it's directly accessible from the street? Doesn't need to... Nobody needs to go within the building?
That's correct.
How are the plans, Mr. Kandell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in strong support of this proposal. This is a new owner of that property. These are existing conditions, and they are legalizing basically the use that is already there. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-3817-32 Appleton STREET. This is a rear balcony and roof deck. Violation Article 64, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback, 10 foot to the lot line. Article 64, Section 9, townhouse, row house extensions into the rear yard, second story, deck of 50 square feet. And Article 64, Section 34, restricted roof structure regulations. Name and address for the record, please.
Eric Seitz, 32 Appleton. Currently live at 312 Shamet, but my wife and I are moving over there. It's a six-unit apartment building that is being converted to two residential units, one of which we're going to be living in.
So tell us what you're proposing to do, then?
We are proposing to add a roof deck and a balcony that will setback six feet by 15 feet.
Sorry, six feet by 15?
15, yeah.
And is it bracket supported?
It is steel going into the building.
Okay. And tell us about the roof deck.
The roof deck, none of which... Any of this is visible from the street. The roof deck's in the rear. It's going to be roughly 10 by 10.
And what's the access?
So there's a roof hatch.
Through a hatch, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Kandell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. I held an abutis meeting, and neighbors did not have any concerns about this project. We would like to see Eric and his growing family be able to move into their new home. Thank you.
Was there any concern about the size of the deck to... And shadow impact?
It didn't come up. And then also, we haven't had anyone reach out since then, and I know that they've also met with the... Reached out to the Civic Association in that area. Usually, people tend to reach out when there's a major concern, but they've been in communication with their direct abutis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Jeff, anything about that shadow impact?
No, it's just...
Because it seems that the six feet is standard and the length of the building.
Six feet bracket supported is standard. I think they just thought it was a little large.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
With the BPDA...
Do they want review?
With BPDA design review?
Yeah, with BPDA design review?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last case, the 9:30, calling BOA 101-4209-87O Street. O Street here. This is an addition of a third floor and basement renovation. The violation is Article 27S. This is in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restricted district. Article 68, Section 8, front yard setback is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the side yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Chris Prudhomme, Zephyr Architects. For my client, the owner of 87O Street, Zephyr Architects, 315 A Street, Boston.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes.
Tell us what's being proposed.
Excuse me?
Tell us what's being proposed.
Um, we are proposing to add a third-story addition and underpin the basement to add livable square footage.
So tell us about the basement. What's the floor-to-ceiling height in there?
The floor-to-ceiling height will be eight feet. Once it is fully dug out, there will be an addition of a bedroom, a bathroom, and additional living square footage.
Bedroom and a bathroom?
It is the-
And does this have a second means of egress?
It does have a second means of egress, a walkout at the back. And it'll be the-
Bedrooms in that unit?
Uh, in, so it's a single-family house. There are currently three bedrooms upstairs. And this would be the addition of one bedroom in the basement. The addition on the third floor would be the master suite. The basement addition would be a full footprint of the building. While the addition to the top floor would be only a portion of that footprint.
And is there a roof deck proposed?
Uh, there is no roof deck.
Okay. Or, and, okay, there's nothing off of-
Nope, there's-
Second, off of the mast, the bedroom?
Correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Candell? Any questions from the board?
There's a note from DA about no building code relief. Was there a need for that?
Well, I think after excavation, it'll be at eight feet. So right now, we're just supporting that.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the protection.
Yeah. Anytime you, there's any sort of extension of living space into the basement, we always put that on. If it hasn't been cited by ISD, just catch all.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an abudders meeting on October 3rd and all questions were answered. Would like to go record in support. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Did a design review on that?
Motion to approve with no code relief?
No code relief and-
Yeah, design review.
And with design review. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? Have moved in some people outside? Hearing none?
Hearing none. We'll take a 10-minute break and we will reconvene at 11:10. The Board of Appeal for December 3rd is back in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And in conformance of the open meeting law, I'm reminding you that this meeting is being livestreamed. As I mentioned at the start of every meeting, we are here to fact-find, so use your opportunity at the mic, either when you speak in support or in opposition to a project, to give us some new information. If somebody has already stated your thing that you were dying to talk about, if somebody's already put it on the record, please help us and put your name and address on the record and tell us, you know, support or opposition. You know, just so that we know that, you know, we kind of know where you stand. So help us in that way. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 10:30 hearings, the first two cases. Calling BOA 982-800-74, Brookley Road. There is a companion case, BOA 982-802-74, Brookley Road. This is the existing basement into a conditional living space with bathroom, bedroom, office, family room, and workshop. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And there's also building code. This is the ninth edition, 780 CMR, Chapter 2, Sections 202. Dwelling unit definition, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including a person. Permanent provision for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Note, the proposed living space extension into the basement of Unit 1 is a violation of the section of the building code, since it provides no independent or common access to the utility equipment and their shut-offs, HVAC, water, et cetera. Located in the basement, for the occupants of all the building. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Marcy Osberg, 74 Brookley Road.
And I'm Neil Market Car. I live with Marcy at 74 Brookley Road.
We're the owners of Unit 1. We've lived there since 2017 and we're interested in doing this renovation for our growing family. We have a three-year-old and a six-month-old at home. We currently live in a two-bedroom on the first floor and have sing, the access to the basement is ours. So I'm going to walk you through the existing condition and then- Yep, go ahead.
Actually, what we do want to know is, so this is extension of living space into the basement?
Yes, that's correct.
It's essentially what it boils down to.
Yes.
Okay? So then, I guess the question that building code issue raises, and that's, that's what we usually like to have addressed first-
Okay.
Is, does it mean that, what, what does that mean? Are you still going to request that relief?
We are, and we can start with that explanation.
Yes, please do.
So we wouldn't, one thing I just want to say before, we tried many ways to make this work with the plans examiner at ISD before coming before you. And unfortunately, there seems no other way except to bring this matter before you.
So it's a triple-decker and the basement is only accessible through our unit. And the basement is completely open right now. There's, there's no walls in the middle. So each unit has its own HVAC. So the only HVAC in the basement is for us. Each unit does have a water shut-off, which is illustrated here. The upstairs, everyone has a little blue knob that shuts off the water, but the house water shut-off is only accessible in the basement. And the other thing that's in the basement is you-
I'm sorry, repeat that again, on the water? Each, each unit has their-
So each, each unit has a water shut-off, this little-
In the bas, in the basement?
No, in their unit. There's a way to shut off the water to, to adjust your unit. But the main water shut-off is on, shown on the bottom of this illustration. In, it's only in the basement. So it's only accessible through our unit. And this is the way it is currently. And also in the basement, next to that, if you turn this over, is the, the sprinkler tower here. So the, the sprinkler shut-off is only accessible through the basement. And this is the way it was when we bought it in 2017. This is a new construction, totally new from the ground up. And this is the way that it was approved by the city.
The COO signed in 2017 with this existing condition.
So this is new construction?
New construction.
Who, who constructed this, do you know?
This is Joe Taylor.
I wonder if they came, they must have come to this board.
I don't think they needed any, any relief.
They didn't need anything?
Well, we don't know for certain.
Because the, the issue is that, you know, Mark, I think you remember this. We struggled with a case where everything started off amicably and then relationships went south and there was real issues about having the units, the, the controls in somebody's unit. So is there really no possibility of fixing this some other way?
Well, we proposed making the, so if you look at the plans again, you can see that there's a, when you walk in the front door of the building, you can enter our unit or you could go down the stairs. So currently, the stairway continues to the basement, but you can only get into that stairway through our unit. So we proposed making the stairway a limited common area where we add another door so that with the front door key, you could get into the stairway and get to the sprinkler, which is right at the bottom of the stairway. And then we add another door at the bottom of the stairs. That's a Unit 1 keyed door.
But ISD said that that creates another building code issue because then you don't have contiguous space, because it's a common staircase. But it would resolve the sprinkler? We would be fine with that.
If it resolved the heater, would it resolve the sprinkler too?
Well, the, the heat, everyone has their own heat and everyone has their own water shut-off. So I think it's just the sprinkler that's the issue.
So, I see, so this water heater thing, that's, is, okay.
That's just for us.
That's just for you, okay. Okay.
So the other solution, which we think would be really hard to do and expensive, is to move this sprinkler pipe into the front common area. It's, it would be very hard to get three feet of clearance, I think, on either side. Our understanding is that you need three feet of clearance. And there's not a lot of room in this area to put this thing. And it's, it's not small. It's a, it's a tall pipe and it has some width to it. So we think that that's not a feasible solution either.
You know, this is something the builder should, should, should deal with. It should not cost you. This is, this is unbelievable. Okay.
We do have approval from our condo association and an agreement.
No, I, I know, but you know, we, we've sat here long enough to see relationships go south and then real troubles down the road, you know?
The thing, the thing that's difficult here is if it's not approved, it's going to continue as is. And we'll have the same problem.
And then we just- We run into a couple of situations with the AHJ, especially the fire department. If there's a fire, they need to get to this as soon as possible, so.
Yeah, so we have, we have an agreement with our condo association, so everyone can access it.
And so this is going to be just a playroom, then?
Yeah, and there's a bedroom.
A playroom, a bedroom, and a bathroom.
Okay.
So that's shown on there.
Okay.
The last page shows our plans.
Yep. How, how are you, how are the plans, Mr. Candell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My predecessor conducted a community process for this proposal. The applicant worked closely to address abudders concerns. The office also has a letter of support from the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClair from City Council, Madam O'Malley's office. We would like to also go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. And we have a letter from the condo association. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on both the building code and the, and the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-4357, 71 to 73 Humboldt Avenue. This is a change of use occupancy, existing use to day school, demolish the existing day school, renovate the existing space to construct two new dwelling units. All new systems, existing building is current, currently multifamily, non-sprinkled. The violation is Article 50, Section 29, the larger area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 8, an eight-unit dwelling use is forbidden use. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Niles Sutphen. I'm the architect for the subject project. My address is 197 H Street in Charles Town. With me today is the owner of the subject building, Mr. Michael Castaldi, who has owned the building for the past 30 years. I've just asked-
The, one of the things we just need to understand is if, if there's a land disposition agreement related to this building and this property?
Yeah, oh, yes, there is. We have a meeting scheduled with BPDA just after this meeting. I just spoke to Mr. Chris Green and he has indicated that BPDA feels that there is no reason why the board should not go ahead and vote as you would see fit to allow this change of use.
Okay. Well, if the disposition agreement, so, so in essence, the, the message, I guess you're trying to convey to us is that you do not expect any issues with the BPDA review at all?
That is correct, yes.
And how long has this land disposition agreement been in place?
Oh, I don't know, Madam Chair. I was just informed of this about a week ago in conversations with BPDA. And they indicated at that time and reiterated again to me in a telephone conversation this morning that they did not feel that there were any implications that would prevent us from requesting the board to make the change of occupancy to allow us to do away with the day school, which has been, incidentally, defunct in the building for the past five years. It is not operated. And my client, Mr. Castaldi, would simply like to restore that space, which, incidentally, is the entire ground floor of the building. I, I should say, the first residential floor of the building here. And he simply wants to restore what the building was originally permitted for, that is eight dwelling units. And he will make the two new dwelling units market rate units.
Was, was the day school nonprofit?
I'm sorry?
Was the day school a nonprofit? Is that why the land disposition agreement was in place?
I don't think so. I, I had the impression in my discussions with Mr. Green that this had to do with a, a larger-scale urban renewal issue that BPDA was involved in. I don't think it's specific to this building.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This, I believe, I forget which urban renewal area it is, but as you know, urban renewal plans are designated, you know, the parcels are designated for certain uses and certain heights and certain FARs. So, you know, even though our recommendation is denial without prejudice, to be honest, I think a short deferral would be great because if a minor modification does have to happen to the LDA, it does have to go to our board and it's not going to go next week. So it would have to be at least one month, maybe two months. I don't know the extent of the modification. And I know that this seems very minor in terms of a change of occupancy. And I don't want it to be construed that we're completely against it. But because there is an LDA, because it's in an urban renewal area, and those urban renewal areas are still in effect, and Chris Green is in charge of urban renewal for the BPDA, I think it might be premature to approve it. I don't think it's worth a denial. I think a very short deferral could probably help this to find out, even if Mr. Sutphen's meeting with Chris later on today proves that there's no need for a minor mod, we can come back and put that on the record, that no minor mod is necessary. If one is, we can approve it with proviso that the mod be submitted to the ZBA as a condition of approval.
Okay. Let's think this through. I just want a show of hands. Who's here in support of this proposal? Jessica? And anybody here in opposition to this proposal? So there's a few people in opposition.
Of course, we have one letter of opposition, Madam Chair.
Because I was going to debate whether to put this as a call of the chair or not, but I think we need to have it regularly scheduled. So may I have a motion for deferral?
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, please. You said month or two months?
Well, I, I mean, our board meets next Thursday. It's definitely not going then. But even if we meet next month, we'll have an idea this week whether or not a modification has to be done.
So all in February? In February sometime?
Just February.
Let's, uh, see.
February 25th.
February 25th, okay? So everybody here, it's February 25th? Mr. Sutphen?
Yes.
You told me that this was possibly a last case? Well, we're going to hold on to you for a couple months, okay?
I thought it was going to get away easily.
Nope, okay, see you in February.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 100-3945, 20 Winthrop Street. This is Unit 1, basement level, we undergoing three, level three alterations. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, reconstructing the extension of a non-conforming building. Article 50, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
With me today is the owner of the property, Ms. Anne Wong. Madam Chair, we are here today seeking to extend the living space of the first-floor unit into the basement. The zoning sub-district is a 3F 4,000. The lot size is 1,823 square feet. I'll scroll down.
1,823?
23 square feet. And we have two violations, extension of a non-conforming use, extending the living space into the basement, and the FAR. The required FAR was 0.8. Currently, the building is, the FAR is 2.13. And with the extension into the basement, the FAR becomes 2.6. Each, each of the units is approx-
And, oh, sorry, tell me about the non-conforming building. Is this, so this is, how many units in the building?
There are four units in the building.
There are four units?
Existing.
And this is a three-family district?
That's correct.
Okay, and tell us what's being proposed?
We're proposing to put additional living space in the basement in the form of two bedrooms.
And so that first unit would have how many bedrooms?
It would have four at that point.
A to, a total of four bedrooms?
Total of four.
And how many bedrooms in the entire building?
Four, there's three on the, three, three. There are 11. And then with the additional two would be 13.
11 bedrooms?
Yes.
And then going up to 13?
That is correct.
Was this, this addressed before this board in the last few years?
No.
No?
Not at all.
Okay. Okay. And tell us about the living space in the basement again? It's, how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms. Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, what else?
And a bath.
And a bath? And there's no, the building is sprinkled, sprinkled?
Sprinkled, yes.
It is? Okay. Okay. And then, you have enough parking, I assume?
No, we don't have some.
I guess it's not triggered because it's just an extension. How are the plans? Mr. Candel, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Ms. Wong wanted to say a few words with regard to the project.
Yes, please. Can you speak up? Because we're having an impossible time hearing today.
We went through the community meeting three times, and my architect, who's in labor today, and I also went door-to-door.
So, the, somebody from the mayor's office will talk about process? Is there anything else you wanted to add?
I had experienced hardship during the construction. It's a rundown building. It's been vacant for more than ten, twenty years. It's right next to the evening school. And when I got it, it's overpriced. The first bidder went away, so I overpaid.
So, please inform your client that we don't care about economic hardship?
Yep.
I mean, she cares, but not, you know, dismiss that as an issue for her personally?
We do, we also have a petition of support supplied by a number of the Butters as well.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, we do have three letters of opposition of Butters.
Chair, members of the board, my name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted a Butters meeting on September 17th, and they also met with the Roxbury Path Forward Neighborhood Association. During both meetings, concerns around density and parking were raised. We'd like to go on record to oppose the project based on community process.
Jessica, can I ask you something? Is, has this owner been a good landlord? Because I'm assuming this landlord, that this is rental property.
It is rental property, yeah. Based on the conversations in the community during the meetings, there were some issues about overcrowding in the building. Obviously, I won't be able to confirm that, but that was raised during the meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Pratik Dubey with the Office of City Councilor Kim Janey. Our office would like to go on record in opposition to the project due to concerns raised by the community members during the community process.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Wheeler, and I live at 85 Moreland Street. And I'm here on behalf of Roxbury Path Forward Neighborhood Association to say that our members attended the Butters meeting, and we also held a neighborhood association meeting. And we oppose the project, but basically, it's because of the overcrowding and that it is the same as two buildings, almost identical to two buildings beside it. And those other buildings have maybe two bedrooms in an apartment. And so, this is already a nonconforming lot, and this would make it even more crowded. And as far as we can see, that the owner is renting it by the room, in every unit by the room. And because there's no parking with this project, it's just, it's a hardship for the community to take any more bedroom. So, we thank you if you would consider denying the application. Thank you.
Cheryl Spence, I live at 33 Montrose Street, unit number three, Roxbury, Mass., 02119. I'm opposed to this project because of the excessive FARA and the nonconforming use. It's basically going to be a transient housing for like a dormitory-style living. That's what we've seen in other properties that she owns on 10 Moreland Street.
Of the other properties?
10 Moreland Street. Also, I'd just like to say there is no demonstratable and substantial hardship that makes a variance necessary for the reasonable use of the building. The developer can continue to use the building in its existing form.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Sophia Transdamar. I am the owner of 19 Winthrop Street, which is diagonal across the street from 20 Winthrop Street. I had the opportunity to walk through the space on August 17th with the owner, as well as two of my neighbors at 15 and 17 Winthrop Street. The current outlay, layout of the property as it exists right now is being presented as if it is being used as eleven bedrooms, but in reality, it's being used as fifteen bedrooms. If you look at the plans, which I do not have in front of me, there are multiple bathrooms within floors two, three, and four. And currently, as residents of the new building, we're moving in Friday, August 30th through the end of September. I've introduced myself to them, and there are two current residents who have expressed that they are looking for three additional roommates to reside in floors two, three, and floor. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Diane Dickerson, and I own the building at 20 Winthrop Street, which is attached to, I'm sorry, 22 Winthrop Street. It's attached in the rear to 20 Winthrop, so we share an emergency exit. I'm very concerned about the current overcrowding. Adding additional rooms in the basement will make it even worse. I did provide a letter in opposition, as did two of my nieces, who each occupy one of the units. The units were designed to be two bedrooms and one bathroom, and that's what ours are. They've made it into ostensibly four bedrooms, one they're calling a living room, but it's basically four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The bedrooms themselves are the size of small closets, which would, I think, appeal only to college students and people with a short-term, very short-term interest in living in there. As I said in my letter, my father bought the house in the 90s when we were trying to change the neighborhood around, and I think that this interferes with the integrity of the neighborhood. I don't think it's good for the neighbors, and it's certainly not good for my family that lives in the building and is concerned about trash, overcrowding, and safety. Thank you.
Okay. So...
Ms. Wong wanted to say a few words.
Yes.
When I first went to the community meeting, they said they supported 134 Warren Street, which is another four-unit with basement turned into condos. But they don't obviously support landlords. My hardship also includes like ten months of gas pipe strike. I totally lost tons of money. I consider myself a small property owner.
So, you own, sorry, 10 Moreland Street, and you own this property?
Yes.
Because I have heard about 10 Moreland, so I was just curious, but...
Yes.
But, okay.
And the people...
So...
Has the work already been done on this?
Yeah, upstairs, yes.
Upstairs, not in the basement.
And it's by regular permit?
Yes.
Complete?
Yep.
Okay. So, it sounds like this is going to have an impact on the community, an adverse impact on the community. May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's denial.
Denial.
That's denial, sorry, denial. Okay.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1008317, 94 Alexander Street. Is Alexander Street here? This is the combined existing lots, 92, 94 Alexander Street. The new lot is to be 4,673 square feet. To change occupancy from a single-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling, construct a new three-story addition onto the existing three-story building. There will be off-street parking located at grade at the rear of the yard. The dwelling will be fully sprinkled. The violation is Article 65, Section 41. Off-street parking, design maneuverability, tandem parking. Article 65, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, accessory parking is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the FARA ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Colin Reed.
And the address?
92 Alexander Street, Dorchester, Mass., 02125.
Will anybody else at the table be speaking?
Yes, Robert Nichols, 404 Napont Ave., Dorchester, Mass., 02122.
And Eric Zacherson, contact 1 Love Rose Street in Charlestown.
Okay. So, tell us what's being proposed?
So, we're proposing a, an two-unit addition to an existing owner-occupied, single-family house. It was, the occupancy is single, but since he bought it, it was taxed as a two, so he bought it as a two, and it's been used as a two-family.
Has he been taxed as a two?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. He has been. So, we're proposing adding two units onto the existing structure, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths on the first floor, and then three beds, two baths for the second and third floor unit.
What are the anticipated unit sizes for each one of these three bedrooms?
Approximately 1,200 square feet.
1,200 square feet, is there?
Yes.
Anticipated housing in the basement?
So, one of the units is a bi-level unit, correct?
This one is bi-level?
So, basement and the first floor will be living space.
Okay. Let's see, so the use is forbidden. This is a three-family district with a four...
Yes.
What's the lot size of this?
I think the lot's forty...
Four, six, seven, eight?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And where's the addition? Tell us about the addition.
It's going to be to the right. So, here's two parcels. 92 is where the existing home is. 94 is where the proposed structure will be added on to the existing home.
And 92 is a two-family, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So, we're going to end up with three units total or four units?
Four units total.
Four units total.
Four units total, correct. Fully sprinkled as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a rendering of what it would look like as well. Yeah, small, but, yeah.
Some basement. Just a bit so that we can go through the plans. So, the basement, let me just look at this. If I'm looking at X, A, one...
Yep.
So, level one is just a common basement?
A lot.
On the existing home, yes.
Ninety-two. Yep, I know.
And this is a picture of how about parking? How is parking?
So, we have five spots in the rear of the property, and so it's two tandem spots, or four tandem spots total.
How do they...
How does it work? If I look at the building, face on, where is the driveway?
To the right.
To the right, yep.
Okay. And the parking is under the building?
It's behind the building.
Or it's flat? Okay?
Yeah, on A10, it has a site plan, and you can kind of see the proposed parking at the back on A10.
Okay. So, rear deck, okay? So, it's forbidden to use accessory parking. What's the, so what's the FAR that's required in a 3F4,000?
It's the FAR we have here.
FAR is 0.8.
And what is...
And we are proposing 1.2.
Okay. And then, tell us about the maneuverability. What's triggering that?
It is the tightness of the turn. There is 20 feet behind each of the parking spaces, but two of them are, again, two of them are tandem in front of the others. But the driveway itself is 10 feet wide, and then when you take the corner, it's a little tight.
How's the plan, Mr. Candel? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted in a Butters meeting on November 13th. They also met with the Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative, Neighborhood Group. The owner has been in the community for 20-plus years and has agreed to keep one of the units affordable and is working with DND. During the meeting, we also observed that there's a similar four-unit building directly across the street, and the renderings are very similar. During the meeting, there was also no opposition from Butters, and we'd like to go on record to support.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Pratik Dubey. I'm from the Office of City Councilor Kim Janey. The council would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with the BPDA design review?
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all second now.
Before I call the next case, I'm going to call the 1130s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Councilor, address?
47 Webster Street, East Boston.
For the record, calling BOA 961467, 47 to 51 Webster Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Laurence Cutino from Richard Lynn's office, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. We're requesting an extremely short deferral. The mayor's office has asked if we would hold another Butters meeting to speak to a few of the neighbors that has already been scheduled for next week. So, again, we're just asking for a short deferral so that we'll have the chance to do that.
So, is this the company deferrals we had?
Yes, it's our second. The first one was due to a five-member board.
Make a motion for deferral.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we're going to squeeze you in on next month, next week, on the 1217, two weeks.
Thank you very much.
At 1030.
Thank you.
Thank you.
1030?
I'm sorry. 1130.
Okay.
Deferral? Address, please?
Property is 13 Rivers Street, 13A and 13B.
Okay. For the record, you have three cases total, correct?
Correct.
Calling BOA 969080, 13B Rivers Street. There are two companion cases, BOA 969078, 13A Rivers Street, and BOA 969070, 13 Rivers Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Gregory Tharian. I live at 741 Brook Road, Milton, Massachusetts.
What are you requesting, sir?
A deferral.
How many deferrals have you had?
We got moved from two weeks ago from a clerical error, so this would be our second one.
And how long a deferral do you think you need?
So, we got a letter out of the blue last Friday from Landmarks at the 11th hour that there's now going to be a preliminary hearing a week from today to present, to make this property land...
And are you done with your community process?
Pardon me?
Are you done with your community process?
We've done all of the, yes, the civic association and the Butters and all of that. This is just a letter that came, so we have, the architect said we should just defer, since there's an open hearing for next Tuesday on this.
So, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Then, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date?
We're going to have to move January, yep. Move January 14. Sorry, January 14.
January 14 at 1130.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Madam Chair, we do have a couple of cases here. I'm going to call in for the record. Third case down, case BOA 885367, Six of Grange Place. I have a letter of withdrawal, so I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
I'm sorry, Grange Place on...
Six of Grange Place. Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, our other case is being postponed to January 14th at 1130. That is the case just above. BOA is 1005501, 24 to 26 Elm Street. So, I'm going to make a motion for deferral.
So, why is it being deferred?
Administrative plans that we advertised.
Okay. And the date, please?
That will be January 14th at 1130.
May I have a motion? Oh, this, is there a...
Second. Motion for deferral.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Go back to the 1030s. Calling the next case, calling BOA 91719318, Middleton Street. This is new construction, Middleton Street here. New construction of a two-family on vacant land. The violation is Article 60, Section 37. Off-street loading is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the FARA ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
No? Okay. Okay, so Harold, tell us briefly what's being proposed.
Okay. Middleton Street is a, uh, street with, uh, lots which are about, uh, twenty-eight-hundred square feet, three thousand square feet. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Alpert is looking at proposing a two-family in this area here. As you can see, most of the, you know, houses on the street are two- or three-family dwellings. And, uh, so we created, uh, one driveway, a two-family, uh, on twenty-eight-hundred. So you've got all the usual violations for a lot sufficient, front yard, rear yard, side yard, open space, FAR because of the constraints inside the lot. Ninety-six seven of the lots on that street are about, uh, twenty-eight-hundred, three thousand square.
So tell us how, um, tell us about the units. It's just, and this is stick-built, right?
New construction, yep.
Stick-built, okay. So the, um, tell us about how the, tell us about the units.
Okay. On the first floor would be a three-bedroom rental unit, uh, and it has a bath and kitchen.
Four feet.
Uh, square meter is about thirteen hundred square feet. Uh, on the upper floor is the family's unit, where all the kids and the family, uh, and so this is a, uh, four-bedroom unit with an office. So on the second floor, you have a kitchen, dining room, office and chef room. And then on the third floor, you have two bedrooms, and then you have a bathroom suite with its own bathroom, walk-in closet. And Alpert's family, a lot of his family lives in this area here, grandma, right down the street and everything.
Okay. Tell us how parking is going to work then.
Well, parking would be, uh, basically, there's a current curb cut already there on site, and so parking would be, you could two cars on the side of the building there or you could park in front on the street.
Okay. How is the plan, Mr. Kandel?
I don't see a stamp from the law get to it, though.
Pardon?
I don't see a stamp from the law get to it.
So is this, uh, who is, who, who did these drawings, Harold? Did you do them?
Uh, this is Richard Smith, the engineer on the project.
Usually we like to have a stamped drawing by the firm architect.
Yeah, I, I have a set of stamps.
You have, okay, so I think if you give that to Mr., Mr. Kandel, he can, Kandel, he can, uh, deal with that. Is, any questions on the board? I'm sorry. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an abutters meeting for this project and we've also gone through the Lucerne Association with this project, and we'd like to go on record in support. And we also like the fact that they work with the community and changed from two curb cuts to one, um, to minimize impact on the parking. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine-eight-zero-nine-one-zero-four-ninety-three Washington Street. This is an interior fit-up, new tenant, Dollar Tree in the existing retail building, stockroom, office, employee area, two accessible restrooms, drinking fountain and mop sink. The violation is Article sixty-five, section fifteen. General retail use is conditional use in this zoning sub-district. And Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Wayne Murphy, one-fifty-six Mount Vernon Street in West Roxbury. With me is Andy Bowman, the attorney on the, on the matter, and the owner of the building, Mr. Hugh Dieb. So, uh, quickly...
So where and what sort of closes Cross Street and Washington Street?
Uh, West Tremlett.
I promise, okay.
It's actually, uh, the parcel is actually on the corner of Washington and West Tremlett Street.
Okay. So tell us what you're proposing to do.
So historically, this was a, uh, retail space. In twenty sixteen, Mr. Dieb, uh, through an LLC that he organized, purchased the building from the Full Life Gospel Center. They stayed there and through July of seventeen, and the building's been vacant since. So in, uh, in April of nineteen, the ISD, uh, issued, uh, a use permit, uh, ALT-nine-three-five-seven-seven-nine. The Dollar Tree designated general contractor then filed building permit applications, uh, in May, and in July, uh, on July twenty-fourth, the ISD informed that person that, uh, there was a non-conforming use.
What's the zoning in this area?
The zoning is, for argument's sake, I would say that...
I don't wanna say with argument's sake.
Okay.
I wanna know what it says in black and white.
Well, i- it says if it's general retail, it's conditional use in this location. If it's...
Jeff, can you help on that? Is that is LC or CC?
I believe it's LC.
It's LC?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
NS, N S, neighborhood shopping.
Close, we'll, we'll go in the middle on that one.
Right. I apologize for misunderstanding your question.
No problem.
So, um, there are two issues on the refusal from ISD. One is the parking. I'd, I'd, I'd like to address that as succinctly as I can. Atypical to a lot of the commercial real estate in the, in the neighborhood, this building does have a small parking area. It's about thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet.
How many spaces?
I beli, I believe you can fit somewhere between six and seven spaces. And when, when I say it's thirteen-seventy-two, that's not the entire space.
So, let's just backtrack. What's the size of the, uh, retail's building, the retail space?
Eight, eight thousand.
Eight thousand square feet, okay?
No, sorry. Closer to seven, seventy-two hundred, I'm told.
Seventy-two hundred square feet, and then you have thirteen-seventy-two for parking. Is that parking and loading or is, or is loading off the street?
It's, it's loading off the street. There is no loading requirement, as I understand the code.
Okay. Um, okay. And, see, okay. So it's, retail is a conditional use, so what are your hours of operation?
Well, they're, they're gonna be until nine PM.
Nine PM every day of the week?
No. Sundays, Sundays will be, I'm pausing only because I'm not, I don't represent Dollar Tree, the prospective tenant. I represent the landlord. The broker, the broker is in the back who might be able to, uh, assist me with those types of answers. I believe a Sunday, uh, closing time is six PM.
Okay. Any, uh, how are the plans, um, Mr. Kandel? Any questions from the board?
When will trucks, deliveries, like, how is that going to be handled?
Well...
Because if you're not familiar with that stretch of Washington, it's pretty congested.
I, I know it is. Uh, I, I am, I am familiar with it. The, um, i- it will be, uh, challenged. There's no doubt about it. Um, I can, I can tell you that Dollar Tree has other locations within the greater area of greater Boston, specifically Boston proper and then outside of Boston. In my conversations with the Dollar Tree representatives, who were going to be here today but couldn't get here with the snow last night, unfortunately, they were coming from out of state, their real estate division, um, they, they expect two deliveries per week that would occur because they do a loop of all their stores. And I think it's two deliveries per week, and they aim to do them between ten AM and three PM. That's their business practice, is my best memory.
And do you know what days of the week?
No. I can't tell you.
It's not a Saturday when everybody is...
Right. No, weekdays, weekdays.
Okay. Because, I mean, to, 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 as a response, that's why this is a conditional use? I mean, there are conditions we can put on it, so, um, any, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Whoever's speaking in support, put your name and address. Tell us briefly what your support is based on.
Good morning. My name is Sean Leoni. I'm a lifelong resident in the community. I actually live a couple blocks down the street...
What's your address?
One-thirty-five Washington Street.
Okay.
A few blocks down the street. I'm here in support of the project.
Thank you. Is anybody else gonna speak? Because if you are, please line up.
Good afternoon. My name is South Blueau Murphy, two forty-seven Fuller Street. I'm in, um, support of this store. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ashley Bartlet. I'm a resident of twenty-one Bicknell Street, and I'm also speaking in support.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Philip Emirati, also of twenty-one Bicknell Street, and I also would like to speak in support.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Daniel Bartlet. I also live at twenty-one Bicknell Street. That was my daughter. And, um, I'm here in support of the Dollar Tree. I'm here for a couple of reasons. The first reason is, is that my mother would kill me if I didn't come in because she's probably the biggest Dollar Tree store supporter in the country. Uh, the last time I was down with her in Florida, she comes up and she stays with me during the summer. And when I was down there, she, when I told her that there was one that was going in near me, she went crazy happy about this. And she made me actually go to the Dollar Tree stores down in Florida to show me what they had in there. The second thing is, is that, um, I'm just a few blocks away from this location, and I rarely if ever go shopping in the Codman Square area. One of the biggest reasons for that is, except for the Walgreens parking lot, which is always filled with other cars, is there's really no place to park. So what it attracted me about this proposal was the fact that they'll actually have dedicated parking for the store, and that would be really important to me because the types of things that I would wanna get, I'm a landlord, would be things that I'd actually require my car or my truck to get. If I were to go get cleaning supplies and things like that, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna schlep them all the way back over.
Thank you.
So I am in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Johnson. I'm A Albion Street, Boston, Mass. I highly recommend Dollar Tree.
Thank you.
For the summer jobs.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nordean Hussain. Um, I actually don't live in the exact area, but I'm constantly there seeing a whole bunch of clients. Um, I'd love to, I'd be in total support of a Dollar Tree being opened up there.
Thank you.
Hi, morning. I'm Rosemary O'Neil. I live on Magnolia Street, and I'm here in support of the Dollar Tree.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christine Brendel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. After several meetings with the neighborhood council, um, we would like to go on record in opposition, um, due to the lack of support with them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President, Andrea Campbell's office. Uh, we also heard the opposition from the neighborhood council, as well as members of the other neighboring civics, Melville Park, WOW Coalition, um, and believe that there is a lot of opposition to this business opening up at this location due to traffic and the reasons that were presented, uh, as well as the fact that there was a Dollar Tree recently opened on Talbot, on Conma Square, uh, across from the Boys and Girls Club, not too far away. So we would like to go on record in, in opposition.
Thank you. Okay, so given all that information, may I have a motion, please? Hearing dead silence. Can somebody speak up, please?
Can I, can I rebut a little bit of the opposition?
No, just, we're in the, um...
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Sir?
All those in favor? The motion does not carry, um, may I have another motion, please?
Motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You've been denied without prejudice. You can't come in with something within a year. Okay?
Calling the next case.
For your time.
Calling BOA nine-four-one-six-seven-three-seven-seventeen to seventeen, seven-twenty-one, American Legion Highway. Let me correct that. Seven-seventeenth to seven-twenty-one, American Legion Highway. This is a change of occupancy and renovation of an existing commercial greenhouse nursery to become a cannabis establishment. The applicant also proposes partial demolition of the existing greenhouse structure and adding new building entrance waiting area and modify existing layout and conditions of the interior of the building pursuant to the plans. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section eleven. Cannabis establishment is a conditional use in a C C dash one sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney at the law from a Prince Lobel. I'm here representing the client, Silver Therapeutics, uh, who seeks to open a cannabis establishment at seven-seventeen, seven-twenty-one, American Legion Highway. Uh, next to my right is our architect, David Lee. To his right is Leah Samora, who's a partner, uh, I'm sorry, Sia Samora, I'm sorry. His wife Leah is, uh, in the audience. Both are partners to the project. Um, next to Sia is the principal, Josh Silver, uh, of Silver Therapeutics. And then we have our security consultant, Joe Harris. He's a former superintendent in Boston Police Department. Brendan McKee is next to him. He's a principal on the project. And then Andrew McClurey is somewhere around here, who is our traffic engineer on the project, available, uh, if needed. Um, the project is, um, to, uh, we're in a sub-district of a community commercial one, which is a conditional use allowed for cannabis establishment at this location. It's a twenty thousand square foot, uh, very large parcel that, um, you may know as the city farm, a, a nursery on American Legion Highway that has, for years operated, uh, and has had, uh, growhouses and greenhouses in the rear.
Mike, can I just ask you, is this in proximity of a school?
Uh, it clears the buffer requirement for the school. It does, yeah. It's, it's more than five hundred feet for the school, and we're more than half a mile from any propose, even proposed, but any existing, uh...
I just wanted to get that cleared right up front.
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, and what we're proposing to do here, Madam Chair, members of the board, is, um, to build, to just renovate the structure, uh, so that, uh, one, in addition to the interior of the building, one small greenhouse will remain, and the greenhouse will be only sixteen hundred square feet. And the purpose of that greenhouse, and this is a very unique proposal, which I think, um, helps the project immensely, is that it will be a demonstration greenhouse. So we will see cultivation occur at that greenhouse on-site for the purpose of teaching people, uh, from this community, from Boston, uh, to how to enter the industry, how to, uh, get lucrative careers within the industry as cultivators. And that's really the work that, um, Sia and Leah will do, who live within one mile of the facility and, uh, who are experts in the field. Um, in addition to the greenhouse, we'll also have, of course, the dispensary. The dispensary be available for both adult use and for, uh, medical use. It's approximately, uh, thirty-six-hundred square feet of the entire sales floor area. We're happy to walk you through that if you want us to. Upstairs would be offices. And then also, I think, unique to this proposal is there's fifteen parking spaces on-site with an additional seven parking spaces at an abutting, uh, owned, uh, parcel.
Where is that?
That's immediately to the left of us.
Is that, is that a written agreement or is it just...
It's, uh, in common ownership, uh, so...
For now.
Yeah, um, it, it's, uh, it's all under the san, it's all under a lease, uh, from the, from the property. It's in common ownership, so...
For now.
Yeah. It's all under a lease from the property. So it would be a total of 22. Even though no parking is technically required, the only violation we have is the use, we thought it was very important to create parking. So we did create, again, 15 onsite and then seven right next to us, so for a total of 22 parking spaces. The hours of operations were negotiated with the community, the Mount Hope Neighborhood Association, and they came out to 11:00 a.m., so totally missing the morning commute completely until 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. And then on Sundays, we'll close at 6:00 p.m., so 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The host community agreement was entered into with the City of Boston on October 17, 2019. I have that if you'd like that. We also have a good neighbor agreement entered into with the Mount Hope Neighborhood Association, which was entered into September 30. And I understand a member of the Mount Hope Neighborhood Association is here. And we also have a lot of support from State Representative Russell Holmes that I'd like to provide to the members, if I may.
So just tell us how this is going to work?
Yeah.
It looks like the entrance is from the rear. What is the front-facing? So the front-facing will be these, the little windows at the top, is that what it is?
Yeah, I'm thinking the best, maybe the best slide to use. Eight, okay, sure. Yeah, so eight is the before and after that you're looking at, the kind of an image that we added to the back of our deck. And above is what you see today, and then below is what it will look like, which is essentially just bringing this barn-like building back to life. But in terms of showing you really how it works, I think it might, if you turn the page before to four, we included this so we could walk you through the, kind of the operations, if you will. And this is, at the bottom part of your page, that's where American Legion Highway is. And you're correct, people will enter from the rear of the building. So in terms of queuing or any of those lines, which we don't anticipate, but even were we to experience that, all of that would be in the rear of the building. And people will enter through that rear, they'll be, you see the kind of entrance reception counter area. That's where IDs will be checked and/or medical IDs, so either you're 21 and older or a medical patient.
So this is both medical and general?
Yeah, it'll be co-located, is how it's referred to. And then, once you're cleared, and that's where our security team, if we have anyone that's, for some reason, they've been banned from the, you know, that's, you have to get through that, but once you're cleared, you're in the retail environment. That's all the blue area you see on this plan. And for now, we have kind of this jewelry case layout, which we think is an effective means of doing both the point of sales and sale and delivering of the product with keeping customers and patients away from anything that they could otherwise touch, really. It's just, it'll be controlled completely by the employees of the dispensary.
So a couple of questions. One, where will the merchandise be stored? What's the security for the merchandise?
Sure. Josh, do you want to reference that?
So, we're building a local vault inside the, in the limited access area. At the end of the day, all the product removes from, gets removed from basically behind the retail counter where it's kept for dispensing. And at the end of the day, it goes into our vault. There's no marijuana left on the sales floor.
Is there a vault in the basement, or where is it?
Well, it'll actually be built into that, we're showing it as the office, but it'll be built into the office.
Okay. And tell us about deliveries.
Deliveries will come in through, they'll come in through the same way that customers come through. We have a dedicated parking spot, well, that we can make dedicated for deliveries. They come in through the front entrance. We have an operating dispensary right now in Williamstown, Massachusetts. The deliveries take about, well, they come through the door and that takes about, you know, two, three minutes. And once they come into the limited access area in the office, everything gets counted. But that's all, that all happens kind of in the backyard. Depending on the size of the delivery, it can take upwards of an hour, but it'll happen.
How many times do you anticipate delivery?
We get deliveries about two to three times a week.
Two or three times a week, okay. And what's the security for the greenhouse? I'm assuming plants will be moved in and out, but maybe you won't?
So, the security for the greenhouse is basically set by the CCC. They have very particularized recommendations on basically where alarms are set. Essentially, we've got a redundant alarm system that goes off for break-ins and anytime there's unauthorized access. In addition, there's panic alarms throughout the building that trigger silently and result in the police will come usually very quickly. It's happened accidentally in our store actually once, and they were there probably under a minute.
Excuse me, it's also a restricted area. This is not an area where customers can walk in and wander and...
You know, it's easy to break into a greenhouse.
So it's not going to be a traditional greenhouse like you'd see it. It's more like a warehouse with a translucent ceiling.
Okay. And you're not anticipating by appointments to start off, are you?
No, we're not.
We didn't, you know, we have the ability through technology, if you're looking at a long weekend and it's like a Columbus Day weekend and you have a Friday and we had a crush, we would have the ability through technology to switch into some form of that. But it's not something that we anticipate will be required for most, 99% of the rest of the time.
And do you have the concept of takeout, that somebody calls ahead of time, you prepackage the material and they're just in and out in about five minutes?
We do that right now, actually, at our Williamstown location. And it results actually in a very quick transaction. People are in and out. They've already gone through our entire menu, which is available online. They made their selection, come in, we check their IDs, obviously, at two points of contact, both right before they come into the building and then at the point of sale. And then they're out in much less time than a typical retail customer.
And what's your minority pocket position in this? Is there...
So this is not an economic empowerment or a social equity applicant. It's unique in that there is some equity for local Boston residents who are also people of color. In the case of Leah and Sia Samora, they have a program that they're running, which will be funded through equity from the project, which will train people in the space. I don't know if you wanted to...
Is that the same, yes, you were the one on Fenway, right?
Absolutely not, no, not in Fenway.
No, you were not related, the one on the Fenway.
No.
Okay, so you're another group that's going to be doing this?
Yes, so my wife and I have some...
What's your name, address, and number of this?
Yeah, my name's Sia Samora and I live at 111 Wellington Hill Street in Matapan, Mass. My wife Leah and I are early participants in the local cannabis business and we have a product in a range of adult-use stores already. We look to help others get into the emerging business too. And so, we'll be running programs right there at City Farm with the fantastic training facility there to encourage exactly what the Cannabis Control Commission and the rest of us are trying to do here, just create a more equitable local cannabis economy.
So we cover traffic, okay. How are the plans? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe Carpenter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. They completed their community process on July 1st of 2019. They've signed a host community agreement with the city. And in that time, they've worked with the Neighborhood Association as well as other neighbors in the area in issues regarding parking, traffic, design. With all the work they've done, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
My name is Ricky Order, 180 Mount Hope Street in Rosendale. I'm a co-leader, co-chair of Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association. On behalf of the residents of the Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association in eastern Rosendale, we are writing this letter of support.
We have your letter in front of us, so you're here in support. You've worked out the details with them over the past few months. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, call Gene Lewis on behalf of Council President Andrea Campbell. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please? With the silence here, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and all set.
Thank you.
Calling the next three cases, calling BOA 101-225-2285. Companion cases, BOA 101-2286, BOA 101-2287. This is for Charles Park Road, Gardner Street, and Gardner Street. This is for 1731 Charles Park Road. This is to combine, to create a new lot of $26,219 square feet for the construction of eight new attached townhouses, numbers 17 to 31, fronting Charles Park Road, each with one garage parking space and one surface parking space. The violation is Article 56, Section 15, the townhouse building, eight units is conditional. Article 56, Section 16, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Article 56, Section 40.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This is for a 180 to 198 Gardner Street. This is the combination to create 26,219 square feet for the construction of 10 new attached townhomes. Numbers 180 to 198, frontin Gardner Street, with one car garage and space and one surface parking space. The article, violation of Article 56, Section 15, townhouse building with 10 units is conditional. Article 56, Section 16, the rear yard isn't sufficient. And Article 56, Section 40.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This is for 199 Gardner Street. This was the combination, combined lots of 16,888 square feet and 10,888 square feet to create a new lot of 36,183 square feet for construction of a new four-story building comprised of 70 units and 44 parking spaces and 26 surface parking spaces with a total of 70 parking spaces. The violation is Article 56, Section 15, a multifamily dwelling is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Secretary, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott Colty Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. To my immediate right is Peter Davos, who is the principal of the developer applicant. My far right is Will Chalfant, who is our architect. And Nick Suzula, my associate, is also here and passed out, for the record and for your review, some presentation materials with some more details on the project site, its context and existing conditions, as well as our memorandum to support the grant of relief that we're requesting, and the BPDA's Article 80 Large Project Review Board memorandum, which recommended your approval of this case at its board hearing in October. Also have, for the record, another support letter. This one from the Parkway Little League, which utilizes Millennium Park, which is immediately at the rear of this immediate area and had a representative participating in the back advisory group as part of the Article 80 case for this project. Would you like me to do an overview, Madam Chair?
Please.
Thank you. So, Mr. Davos is a West Roxbury resident and a local developer who was approved by this board in 2016 for the Oak Row Apartments at 1235 VFW Parkway, which is this same area, same zoning in the commercial, community commercial, and the same type of relief. So what we're proposing now really is the second phase to introduce much-needed residential housing at this transitional edge section of the neighborhood. In back of the Oak Row Apartments is an industrial site along Gardner Street, and that is the site, which you'll see on the materials that I handed out, where the proposed apartment building would be. The second component of these three cases is homeownership townhouses on the opposite of Gardner Street that also front on Charles Park Road. And those are a total of 18 townhomes, all three-bedroom units, all homeownership. What is necessary is the conditional use for the residential and also a variance which is supported for the rear yard, which is supported by the unique aspects of the property, which both fronts on Gardner Street and fronts on Charles Park Road. There's no front yard requirement, but there is a rear yard requirement. The way that this combined development operates is there are two front yards for these rowhouse-connected townhomes on that section. Combined, the property site is about 1.4 acres. The first development component is a four-story, 70-unit apartment building.
So PDAs are not allowed in the West Roxbury zone? PDAs are not allowed in the West Roxbury zone?
Correct, correct, yep. And so, four stories, 70 residential, 70 apartment units and 70 parking spaces inside the building. And across the street, again, fronting on Gardner, Charles Park Road, is the, are the 18 townhomes, nine on one side, nine on the other, parking and open space in the middle. Each of these, each of these townhomes have their own driveway and garage, so it's two parking spaces each. And we would suggest that as part of the Article 80 process, we had extensive city agency scoping and public review to support the conditional use for residential in an area that's starting to transition more into residential. We have some important abutters, one is the introduction of...
I'm sorry, start again on parking, please. Tell us about the parking here.
Yep, so 70 rental units in the four-story apartment building.
What's the requirement for parking? One prevailing unit?
And 18 townhomes, 36 parking spaces. And so, the way that operates is you have one garage, these are attached townhomes, and as you pull into the back, you have a driveway with a garage. So, these are all three-bedroom units for homeownership. And I'm sure you hear a lot about, you know, the mayor's 2030 plan and the need for housing. It's not just housing for housing's sake, but it's a variety. We think there's a big need in the West Roxbury community for family homeownership like this, that's new construction. And so, all of those 18 townhomes, two of which will be affordable, and seven, I'm sorry, nine affordables in the apartment building are all three-bedroom, two-bath units with two parking spaces and with assigned outdoor space and the like. Again, at the foot of probably one of the most popular parks in West Roxbury.
So tell us, so the circulation will be off of Gardner Street to both, I'm sorry, part of Gardner and part of Charles River?
Right, Charles Park.
I see everybody shaking their head, so please correct me. I probably covered this, but I was so busy looking at the plans that I was...
Yes.
I cannot...
So VFW, VFW is at the front, right? Gardner Street becomes a one-way street that was, had some mix of industrial uses and a Happy Day Children's School that is next to us. On the opposite side of that parallel is Charles Park Road that also goes out towards the VFW Parkway. So Gardner Street, on one side of Gardner Street is the apartment building, which will be directly in back of the Oak Row apartment building. Its rear yard abuts the Home Depot. This is at the intersection sort of on the Dedham line.
I mean, a couple of us live not too far, so we know the site pretty well.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so again, how does the circulation work for the townhomes?
I'm sorry?
So the parking circulation for the townhouses will be off of...
Charles Park Road. Charles Park Road, yes, ma'am.
And again, I think...
The townhouses do not egress or exit onto Gardner, just the apartment.
Okay, and so you are providing in both developments a total of 106 spaces? You are, okay? As required by the... okay.
So, just a quick question, I live in West Roxbury now very well. So Gardner Street, obviously, going up to Millennium Park, very, very busy in the summertime, obviously, soccer and everything. So you're saying to go onto Gardner Street, that's where the townhouse is going?
I would say Charles Park Road is the busier one to the left of it.
Yeah.
Gardner from the...
That's near Marino, is correct.
Is one way.
Right, yeah.
That's where it terminates, well, actually goes across the park.
So you're going in, you're going in Gardner?
You'll have to go in...
Charles Park.
Charles Park.
And then go out Gardner?
Correct.
Okay.
Gardner is one way.
Yeah, okay.
And one of the things we worked on through the Article 80 process, you'll see in the board memo that I attached, was some traffic calming aspects. For Charles Park Road, kind of becomes a little bit of a cut-through, people coming from the Home Depot around the back. And this area is sort of, is sort of evolving.
Guilty myself.
Guilty.
Yeah.
The 10 townhomes on Gardner, though they front on Gardner, all vehicle traffic in and out is solely from Charles Park Road.
Okay, and it's a singular driveway cut, yeah.
And you know, from the current buildings, it looks like you, the, I mean, I just look at it from a resident perspective, you know, for them to see the traffic into Home Depot night and day, because they keep long hours at Home Depot, if there's a possibility of increased screening of Evergreens or whatever it is, to minimize that impact on those residences. I mean, I think the other thing that's changed is I've gotten stuck behind a school bus a couple of times, but that's all good, you know? So...
Couple things, so the back of that site on Gardner Street is, and we talked about the rear yard, we do not need a rear yard variance on that side. We're more than 40 feet off, and that's that buffer. And there are also some topographical sort of changes there. And then the parking lot for Home Depot until you get to the building, so... But through the BPDA process, we'll have further design review.
Yeah, I would hope that, you know, when something comes before us, that we would see as comprehensive a plan as possible, you know? Because everybody wants to kick it down the road to the BPDA, but you know, kind of, this is the last real stop as far as approvals go. No offense to the BPDA.
Nuntaken.
So the plans, how are the plans, did I ask you that already?
Tell your arms out.
Yeah, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. Mr. Davos and his team completed an extensive community process. They met with all the directive abutters, they completed the Article 80 BPA process, received their approval in October. And as Mr. Hanley mentioned, they had support from the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council and Parkway Little League, and we'd just like to reiterate that support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to also go on record and support this project. But while the council appreciates the efforts that the developer is making to have a more energy-efficient building, the council is hopeful that the project will get closer to net-zero carbon during BPDA's design review.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the, I'm sorry. Karen Foley, Councilor of Abbe, Georgia's office, would like to echo Councilor Matt O'Malley's sentiments in going for a cleaner building, and we support this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with design review.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries.
Calling an extra case, calling BOA 980075, 37 Colbert Avenue. This is a change in use for a two-family residential to a three-family. Violation Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 8, three units in a 2F 5,000 is forbidden. Article 67, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 67, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Adam Rogoff, I'm an attorney for Demeter Sevy, 37 Colbert Avenue. This, my client purchased a property in 2004, five years after he came to America, and it is, it has always been, or as far as we can tell, has long been a, functionally as a three-family.
So, the client taxes as a three-family?
He has not, no.
He has not, so...
It has been as a, as a, not as a legal three-family, but as the layout and...
Has it been occupied as a three-family?
Well, he has had family and he has had, and he has had friends there, and he has, it has been occupied as a three-family, correct.
But who taxes as a three-family?
That's correct.
Does FATE taxes as a one-family?
No, as a two, I'm sorry.
Does FATE taxes as a...
As a two, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm fortunate, I apologize for, Demeter, will you hold this side up? I apologize, our printer was broken this morning. But this is, this is his house here, and all of the other houses on the street have the same architectural style. These were all, have done the same conversion over time as three-family, and this is the sole one.
I think generally we use, as we look at that, with a bit of skepticism.
Understood.
We're not sure if those were done legally or not, you know, so, you know, just to give you a heads-up, you know?
These are, these are all, have been legal, all the others have legally been converted, okay? But I understand that it is instructive and not dispositive. What I, what I do want to just convey is that the architectural style has, has been one that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood as a three-family. There are other properties that are, look different, that are of smaller two-family and single-family.
Are they supposed to be in the unit?
It's for, it's in the third floor.
In the attic?
In the attic.
And what's the floor ceiling height?
You can put the...
Yep. Seven, eight and a half.
Seven, six?
Seven, eight and a half.
Seven, eight and a half.
Okay. Okay, and what's the proposed size of that unit?
I don't actually have the exact number. I believe it's about 750.
More than that.
That's one.
No, we're looking at, not, not at the knee walls, but a place where that's usable.
From, from the five-foot area, I actually, I apologize, I do not have that number.
Okay. How would the plans, Mr. Kendell?
George has it.
Any questions from the board?
What's the, what's the breakdown of, what do we have, two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
It's, it's a two-bedroom, throughout.
Three two-bedroom units?
We've gone through the community process, and there was support from the neighborhood, no opposition.
You know, we don't usually look at two bedrooms as 750, that's probably likely a one-bedroom.
No, it's around 1,000.
He says it's around 1,000.
Not really providing a lot of information, but, yeah.
You're gonna have to help us here. I, you know, I, I live on Lubbock Street, which is a couple blocks over. I'm familiar with the street, but I'm sure the rest of the board, you need to come here and tell us a story about why, what it is that's proposed, and give us the details, because you're looking for zoning code relief on FAR, on usable open space, on a number of things.
So, under the, so the, for the parking, we, the parking, it's, it's two, there's three spaces currently on the property. So we'd be at a variance effectively for three. The, the use obviously is self-explanatory. The lot area would require another 3,000 square feet in order for the third unit, it's a 5,000 square foot. FAR would be 2,500, and we're north of...
FAR is gonna give you a single-digit or, so what's the FAR?
It's .5.
The FAR is...
Rate is point...
The, the current FAR is, the zoning required FAR is .5.
2,500.
And what is this one at?
And this is at, it's 28 and change.
So, it's 2.8, are you saying, is that what you're saying?
So the FAR would be point, it's .6, .68 or something like that.
How large is the lot?
The lot is 5,000. And then the usable space is, required is 1,750, and we're, we were short of that, about 150 feet.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I, I have a question. I'm just looking at the tax record on assessing, and it says that up until 2010 it was taxed as a two-family, and then in 2011 it switches to a three-family. So I understand that this may not be perfect, but it's conflicting information then.
We, we do not, actually, I didn't know that, and I wouldn't know why it was converted to a three from the tax purposes.
Has there ever, have they ever come before to convert it?
Fantastic. Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Carpenter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project. We've completed the community process. They did receive a number of support from director butters. With that being said, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Need a holder from Council McCarthy's office, and we would also, Council McCarthy would also like to echo the sentiments of the mayor's office in go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Mr. Kendell, I think we should really look at this and think about this as a one-bedroom on the third unit, of the third unit rather than a two-bedroom.
Madam Chair, if I could, do we have clarification on the square footage?
I'm, I, if I could...
Go ahead.
If, if it's, if it's, if that's an issue, I would ask that the board would give me an opportunity to come back with that information.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough information available.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion for deferral.
There, a second. All those, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
I'm gonna squeeze in on February 25th.
February 25th, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Case calling BOA 1014145, 11 Taft Hill Terrace. This is a wrecked, a new 16-unit residential building, violations Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 8, the MFR is forbidden use in the 2F 5,000 sub-district. Article 67, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 67, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 67, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. With me is Owen Barry, who's the owner of this proposal, together with his architect, Jason Art. So, this proposal is to build a four-story, 16-unit development with 16, with 14 parking garage spaces and 16 bike spaces. The zoning in this...
I'm sorry, tell me this again?
Sure. It's, it's a four, four-story building.
Yep.
16.
14 parking.
And 16 units.
Yep, I got 16 units, 14 parking, and how many bikes?
And 16, 16 bicycle spaces.
16 bikes, okay.
Madam Chair, the zoning in this neighborhood is 2F 5,000. The lot size is 9,780 square feet. As you can tell from the handout there, this proposal went through an Article 80 process with the BPDA, was approved at the September Board BPDA meeting. The zoning violations, we have parking, as you know, in Rosendale, it's two per unit. We're doing 14 for 16 units. Use, because it's a 2F district, this is multifamily residential.
So, what's required by zoning?
For which? Parking?
Yep.
Two per dwelling unit.
Two dwelling units, so that's 32?
Correct.
Okay. You're providing 14.
Use, it is zoned two-family, and it's multifamily residential. FAR, a .5 is allowed, we're at 2.1. Height is 35 feet, two and a half stories. We are 43 feet at four stories. Open space is 1,750 per dwelling unit, we're about 2,700 square feet collective. Front yard setback is 20 feet, we're 6 feet 8 inches. Side yard 10, we're 3 feet on one side, 10 feet on the other side. Rear yard is 40, and we're at 5 feet. The program of the units is three one-bedroom units, approximately 800 to 1,000 square feet. There are two...
So, three, sorry.
I'm sorry, if I'm speaking too fast, I apologize.
What, three one-bedrooms, 800 square feet?
850 to 1,000 square feet. There are two three-bedroom units, approximately 1,400 square feet, and there are 11 two-bedroom units, which are approximately 1,150 square feet.
And how many affordables?
There's two affordables and also a cash contribution. And I'll get into that in a minute, but the, it went through the Article 80 process, there are two affordable units, it's a 17, $17,500 cash contribution to the BTD, and that money is to improve access around Adams Park and Rosendale Square. BTD has a plan that they're instituting, so they wanted funding for that, so that was part of the community benefit agreement. It went through a lengthy community process.
Is there, are there roof decks?
Yes, sir, three private roof decks accessible from the three of the top units.
Okay. Then, just, give me, give us a minute, please, to look at the plans.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just have a, just a comment, I know this is, and please don't tell me it's gonna go through Article, through BPDA design review. I'm looking at the view from Bastille Street and Adams Park, and this, this just looks kind of out of context. It looks like it could very well be South Boston or Dorchester or anywhere in the universe. It's not, my sense is that it's not reflective of what, you know, I'm totally, I mean, you probably already know this, that I'm a Rosendale resident, you know, and so, would be concerned about that kind of aesthetic. I mean, I'm not concerned about it in other neighborhoods, but I'll just put that out there.
To that point, Madam Chair, we went through a very lengthy community process, working, there were over six community meetings and also several smaller meetings with the director butters to gain their support for this proposal.
Yeah. And so, so you're providing 14 parking spots. How are the plans, Mr. Kendell? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Carpenter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This project, completed the community process on July 24, 2019, was approved at the BPDA Board in September of 2019. They received numerous support from the community, including local neighborhood group Walk Up Rosendale. With that being said, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Need a holder from Council McCarthy's office. We would also like to go in support of this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Just wanted to speak in support, I'm speaking now as an individual, I'm, I live in Rosendale, Adam Rogoff, and I'm also on the steering committee of Walk Up Rosendale.
What's your address, please?
Sorry?
What's your address? Your name and address?
28 Ashfield Street, Adam Rogoff, and I am on the steering committee of Walk Up Rosendale. And I wanted to reinforce that Walk Up Rosendale is highly supportive of this project because we see it as something that is gonna increase the walkability and the, the number of people who live in the, in the neighborhood who will have access to both housing and services.
Yes, no, I'm not gonna go into that debate about parking and parking, lack of parking in business districts, but, okay, so given this information, is anybody here to speak in opposition? That's what I got hung up on. Okay, so may I, it's getting late. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a BPDA design, design review?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And please, I appeal to one of the attorneys who was here at the beginning of the day, because, to, because you work more closely with architects, and I know there's this whole BPDA design review process, but, you know, sometimes we need to see something that's different and not something that could be in any district, and that's no disrespect to you, because I, I know what you have to go through balancing everything as a designer, you know, but there is the substation there that has some level of character, there are other buildings there, you know, that can be supported in some way with a design that's going to be more durable than, than perhaps what's being proposed all over the city, you know, so, so anyway, I just make that as an appeal to, yeah, you did everything?
Yeah, but, yeah. Calling the next case, calling BOA 954154, 48 Alston Street. This is a wrecked, a new nine-unit residential building with parking at ground level. Violation Article 51, Section 8, a multifamily residential dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article 51, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the height, height requirement is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9, the height requirement is excessive in feet. Article 51, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the location of the main entrance of the dwelling shall face the front lot line. And Article 51, Section 40-5, off-street parking design, size, access, and maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, 308 Victory Road, Quincy, Quincy. I'm joined to my immediate right by Arthur Chu, our architect, and by James Chan, who represents the owner of the property.
So, tell us what's being proposed?
Sure. Our proposal today fits into what the city's goals are for housing. We are looking to replace an underutilized four-family with...
Can I just give you, ask you for a quick break? Can you look at the BPDA recommendations?
He did, I gave it to him.
You shared it with them?
I did.
Okay. So just tell us without reading what you're proposing to do?
We're, we're proposing eight new condo units to replace an exist, an existing four-family. These units will be three two-bedroom units and five three-bedroom units. Yeah, three two-bedrooms and five three-bedrooms. What they are looking to attract is young families and professionals in the area for homeownership.
So while you're on the bedrooms, can you tell us the projected size of the units?
The townhouse, the three bedrooms is 2,500, 43 square feet. Other three bedrooms range between 1,400, 360, 200, 200.
Okay.
And two bedrooms, I'm sorry, two bedrooms is 1,689 RFP, and the other three bedrooms are around 4,500 to 8,000 square feet.
Okay. So, and how many parking spaces are you providing?
10.
10 parking spaces.
10 parking spaces?
Underground. Underground.
Underground, I noticed that.
Yes.
And how many are required?
Required, it's one-point-seven-five district.
One-point-seven-five?
Yep.
So, it would be seventeen? No, I don't know. And then, the unit family one, is this a, this is an elevator building, you're providing bike storage. Your units, you've given us the unit size. Are there any proposed decks on this?
Sure, no decks.
No decks.
Okay. Okay, let's see, this is a, so it's a forbidden use, excessive FBR. Can you give us a sense of what's around it?
Around it is other multifamily homes. As in for the FAR, the FAR for this proposed building is one-point-four, which actually fits in the middle of what is in the neighborhood. And around the neighborhood, they mostly run between point-five and two-point-oh. So, we fit right in the, the middle of that. As for some of the other variances we're requesting, as for multi, multifamily use, the original proposal that we went to the neighborhood, we had four separate meetings with the butters. The first proposal was eleven, and then after meeting with them, we dropped from nine to eight.
I'm going to tell you, I'll tell everybody this, that our baseline is two F five thousand, not, not what the applicant starts off with.
Okay.
Okay, so we, we look at that and just see how, how much you exceed that, okay?
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
My drawings reflect nine units, not eight.
Yeah.
Do you have updated drawings? Are they stamped?
Uh, they're not stamped.
So, can you share those, please, with Mr. Ciprendell? And how have they changed? Where did you knock off a unit?
On the fourth.
Yep.
We reduced the thing.
By reducing a quarter mile, so you got it.
Right. And that took away the height variance as well.
Okay. I'm sorry?
That took away the height variance from forty-five to thirty-three.
Okay. Any questions from the board while I give Mr. Ciprendell a chance to look at the plans? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco on behalf of Councilor Mark Ciomo. Like to go on record in support. Madam Chair, just want to mention a few things. In the area of the property, there's a mix of apartment buildings and multifamily homes. In addition to that, in terms of the design, they've been able to modify it from the beginning so that in the current proposal, it fits the neighborhood. And lastly, the proponent has committed for the property to be seventy-five percent owner occupied, so with those comments, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Alicia Payne here on behalf of Councilor Flaherty wishing to echo the sentiments of Councilor Ciomo's office and also go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm a director butter at four Graylock Road. My name is Sam Yulhui, and I oppose because the problem that it's going to bring to the neighborhood-
I'm sorry, did you say you opposed this?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The problem that it's going to bring to the neighborhood, which is already a big problem, is the rat problem, pests and trash, and mostly units aren't, houses aren't even owner occupied anymore. There's very few. I lived on my property almost forty years, and there's, it's almost all students now, and it, and it just, the neighborhood has just gone right down the tubes, and with this project, it's going to be a lot worse.
Okay, thank you.
You know, because-
Okay.
With all these things that's going on, and it just, and I've been to most of these units in Austin-Brighton area because I'm a licensed, licensed exterminator. I see rat problems, I see bedbugs, I see all these problems because the owners do not live in these buildings, and they're just managed by property management people, and they don't take care of these properties at all.
Okay, thank you.
Whether it's condos or whatever.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, everybody. Is anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, reviewing concerns raised by butters, director butters at the butters' meetings that we held, our office would like to go on record of opposition.
Did it go to the BAI, not the, oh, ACA?
Uh, no.
We, we do have a letter-
We have letters as well from the residents.
Okay.
We do have a letter from Tony Disidoro. He opposes the project.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor Sabe George's office, would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. And you need to put some on the record?
We have one letter, strong opposition from a butter, and then obviously Tony Disidoro from BAI.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I address one of the complaints?
I think Bob had something to say, though.
So, pardon?
Bob had something to say before.
Bob, I missed you. Go ahead.
Bob D'Amico, Madam Chair Lady and members of the board. I'm a little confused because the older plans showed nine parking spaces, the newer show eight, and they commented that they're providing ten, so I'm a little confused about that.
Ten.
Clarification?
It's ten parking spots.
Okay, so it's ten spots and it's eight units, and I did have a question because I was wondering how did you, what was your strategy to make seventy-five percent of the units owner occupied?
Owner occupied? It was actually, I'd like to, that's actually going to be able, how I'm going to answer one of the complaints, is because there's a market in this community for professional, for homeownership. Austin only has eleven percent homeownership, and there's people that want to buy and invest in the community. So, as in for having people coming in there, they're going to be, you know, tenants, they're going to come and go. These are people that are going to buy the place, stay there, and take care of the property. One of the quotes actually at our butters' meeting was, we have one absentee landlord right now, we don't want eight of them. So, by making six of them deed restricted, that's six guaranteed people that are going to be living there and taking care of the property, so you have six hands-on landlords.
So, let me just also, what did I want to ask you? Tell us about the existing, how many units in that house?
The existing house right now is being assessed as a four-family.
Being assessed as a four-family?
Right.
And is it, is it, is it owner occupied in any way?
No.
No, it's a-
It's transient housing, there's people coming and going at all times.
Okay, so this owner who's made a benefit from having these four units is proposing to have a greater benefit by having it good.
The owner's looking to improve an underutilized property to actually improve the neighborhood and bring people into the neighborhood that are going to, you know, invest in the community, that work here and live here and hopefully raise a family.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to go back to the parking, may. So, you said that there's ten spots that are going to have, I'm only seeing eight in the plans that we have.
So, from the last butters' meeting that we had, we, we agreed to add more parking, so we ended up taking one of the basement townhouse units away in the plans, and we're looking to add two spaces to that to make it ten.
So, that would be unit one or unit two?
One, I believe.
Right. Because at the butters' meeting, one of their concerns, we weren't offering enough parking. So, we dropped the units and increased the parking.
We're just not seeing it on our plans.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, these drawings haven't gone before the plan exhibit.
That's not good. Well, okay, we've heard people speak in support, we have people speak in opposition. May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion of denial without prejudice.
Is there a second? So, denial without prejudice means we can see this proposal again within a few months. A denial means that we don't want to see eight units, we'd like to see something else.
Motion for denial.
Is there a second? There is no second. So, may I have a new motion?
Actually, Madam Chair, I will second that motion.
Yeah? Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody's opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed?
Denial.
Straight denial, which is, which means we don't want to see an eight-unit building. It could be anything else, but not an eight-unit building in this configuration. So, let me, so just to clarify for the new members of the board, a denial without prejudice means that we can see a project within a year, and it could be the same project, it could be something else. A denial means we cannot see it for a year, but it gives the applicant an opportunity to come in with a fewer number of units within that year time. Okay? So, so based on that clarification, who made the motion?
I made a motion for denial.
For denial, you second?
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, who's, okay, since I hear sighs, I do not-
I'm going to say opposed as well.
Okay, motion carries because there are five in support of the motion. Okay? Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-zero-one-two-eight-eight-three, five-oh-six to five-twelve, A Park Drive. This is a change of acts from convenience store to restaurant with takeout, Domino's Pizza. The violation is Article eight, section one, section seven. Takeout restaurant is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is William Mohan. I'm a licensing consultant. I'm, they're working with and for Boston Pie, the largest Domino's franchise owner in New England. And we are the current franchise in the Fenway area. We have a facility on Boylston Street that has been there for decades. The only problem is somebody bought the building and wants to tear it down and build a bigger building. And so, we are looking to, coming before the board for relief, for transferring section twenty-one, thirty-six A and thirty-seven for-
So, let me just ask you, how many seats are you anticipating having in this restaurant?
Between ten and twelve.
Ten and twelve, and this is on Park Drive, ten to twelve seats?
Yes.
What are your anticipated hours of operation?
Hours of operation are the same that we are, that we have at our current store, and that is ten, what's-
Help me, please, help me, please.
Ten, ten AM to three AM.
Three, ten to three, okay.
And we have a license to, for Fridays and Saturdays to deliver till four.
Till four AM, okay.
Right.
Delivery till four.
And that's pretty, pretty standard for our Boston operations.
And then, are you providing any parking?
We are parking, we made arrangements with Boston University. We did strike gold when this site opened up because we just plopped right in the middle of Boston University. And any place a pizza shop wants to be is in the middle of a college.
Especially with that four AM delivery.
And we do have twelve shared spaces at the building, and then negotiated for five additional spaces at the BU parking lot, faculty parking lot.
How are the plans, Mr. Ciprendell?
I'm ready.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. My colleague Shanice Pimentel did do a community process related to the storefront. We see no issues at this time, and they do have the support of BU along with the neighboring civic institution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Nick Carter for Councilor Zachem's office. We'd like to go on record in support as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have submitted letters of support that your secretary has.
Okay. May I have a motion, please? Oh, are you speaking in opposition?
I am, ma'am.
Oh, please, put your name and address on the record.
Thank you. My name is Dolores Bogdanian. I live at four-fifty-two Park Drive in Boston. I am here as an individual and also as president of the Audubon Circle Neighborhood Association. It's a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization, active since nineteen-seventy-nine, and registered with the Secretary of State's office as a nonprofit organization. I did not want to speak in opposition to this. I was simply going to ask the board to approve the conditional use limited to this particular applicant so that no future occupant of the premises would be entitled to or have the benefit of a takeout conditional use permit. But I have, am concerned about whether this board is also approving the hours of operation. Is that the case? Or is this a matter for the licensing board?
So, this is a conditional use permit? Yes, we would, we would also have authority over the hours of operation.
Okay, in that case, then, we do speak in opposition. We met with the applicant in November, and we being the board of the Neighborhood Association, we talked about our concerns about the hours of operation, and the owner was very understanding and in fact said that, that they would close at midnight on weekdays and lobby, lobby close, lobby would close on weekdays at midnight, on Fri, on weekends until one AM, at one AM, and that with delivery, however, until three AM. And we, I have that in writing from the applicant. I learned this morning, however, that the plan was in fact to seek the hours they currently have, which is the three AM and four AM. And I'm very concerned about that, even though current, the location of which they're speaking is in fact very close to what are now BU student residences. It was also, was at one time historically part of our neighborhood, and of course is still physically connected. The Audubon Circle Neighborhood is very close to Kenmore Square, Lansdowne Street, Fenway Park.
You know, we're very familiar with Audubon Circle.
Thank you.
You've, you know, representatives over the years have been here to speak before us in support or opposition to projects, so yes, we're very familiar with you as a group.
So, the concern, obviously, is this becomes a magnet for foot traffic, vehicle traffic, you know, to come to a very late-night establishment, three AM. And as you know, that kind of potential disruption is, is having an effect on residents. Even though we live in the city, every human being on earth needs to sleep, needs uninterrupted sleep. I am sure the applicant here has every intention to be a very good business operator, and I'm looking forward to a cooperative relationship with them. I just think that I would ask this board to consider the effect that such late-night hours would have on our neighborhood, and I think that everyone, even those living in the city, deserve and should expect a small measure of quiet and peace in the city's neighborhoods, even if just for a few hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could respond for a minute to that. We did meet with the board.
Okay.
The neighborhood was described as residential, the suburbs of Boston. I, I had not even been to that location yet, and the next day I went there, and I was trying to find the suburb.
Please, I just want facts. Please talk to the facts.
We, this, this neighborhood is BU. The residents of the neighborhood are BU students.
You're not helping your case. Let me tell you right up front, as Boston residents, all of us, this is not helping the case at all. Okay?
And I think if you hadn't agreed with the community, I think you should stand by that commu, that command.
Well, we do have the support from the letter of-
Well, I'm talking about the time, if that's something that you guys brought up. With the community and the support, you know, they gave you, they gave you the support, and obviously they're here to support you, but now they changed the time in the eleventh hour, seems a little bit different. Maybe you can enlighten me.
If I can just jump in. So, when we spoke at that meeting, I suggested the hours that we could look, close the lobby, and that was before I realized that all town where we're going into is open twenty-four seven, and that for the past forty-plus years, there has been a pizza place in this building, my brother's pizza, and I think Gigi's, that's been open till three AM. So, what I suggested to the, the Audubon Circle this morning is that I would like to have the hours of the lobby, similar to what the deliveries are, three o'clock, for, I'm willing to do three o'clock, and put cameras out front if we have any issue at all with any type of nuisance with, you know, if students are coming in late night and it's causing a disruption, I'm happy to reduce the hours of the lobby.
You know, the difference is, though, that chain stores respond differently to neighborhood concerns than local and small businesses, you know? And that's something we need to be cognizant of as, as a, as a group that sees everything, you know, suit to nuts on projects, you know? So, that's, that's the lens we come in to a project with, okay?
Absolutely understood, and I guess the only thing I would mention is that I am the franchisee. Yes, I have thirty stores, but I am very involved in my operation day-to-day and have the same concerns that any of you would have, and I've dealt with situations like this in other cities, and we have, after the fact, reduced our hours when we found out that, for instance, we had homeless people- reduced our hours when we found out that, for instance, we had homeless people coming in to our, so, just one example.
Okay. So, given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve providing that the lobby-
Because we usually have, yeah, we usually have takeout provisos.
Yeah, to this petitioner only.
Which is to this petitioner only.
To this petitioner only, and that-
And that products be, the staff will give you the usual, the usual takeout, but included in that is this petitioner only, and then we can look at the hours of operation.
Yeah.
Weekdays to midnight.
Weekdays to midnight, weekends to 1:00 AM, and then-
Delivery till 3:00.
Delivery till 3:00, for the takeout portion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the last and only case, 11:30. Calling BOA 878-988-822, Canterbury Street. This is a change of occupancy from a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling at a new basement unit. The violation is Article 67, Section 8, a two-family is a forbidden use. Article 67, Section 8, basement units are forbidden for this location. Article 67, Section 9, insufficient usable open space, and Article 67, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm located at 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury. To my immediate right is the owner and applicant, Edwin Solano, to his right as a project architect, Ed Roach. And what we are proposing here is to change the occupancy of an existing single-family home to a two-family home, and doing so by taking the existing basement space and renovating that into a standalone dwelling space. I'd suggest that this proposal is very reasonable, and I'd ask the board to consider some main points. The use itself is reasonable, while it's a single-family 5,000 district, the second page in my packet will show it's sandwiched in a very diverse part of the city.
So, can you please backtrack for us?
Sure.
And give us the basics, okay? So, this is a 1F 5,000 zone?
Yes.
And what's the lot size on this?
The lot size is, let me get to that point here.
4370.
4370?
Yes.
Okay. And then, tell us about the existing building, how many square feet is it?
The existing building is currently 1,788 gross floor area with a .4 FAR.
Okay, and then, and then, the FAR will remain the same under this proposal?
It would not, it would increase because we'd be converting the existing basement space into living space. That would increase the gross floor area to 2,702 square feet, which would be a .6, which exceeds the allowable FAR by a tenth, and then 200 square feet. But in doing so, it's utilizing existing space as opposed to adding additional new mass.
And what's, so, what's the anticipated space in the basement?
The space is about 879 square feet. It would include two bedrooms, a kitchen, and a living room.
Hopefully, a bathroom, too?
I'm sorry, yes, a bathroom, I, and any design question, I would defer to Mr. Roach too, but, of course.
It's got, okay, and then, the upper unit would be how many units?
It would be-
How many square feet, sorry?
Oh, it'd be the existing 1,720, 1,788 square feet. And the, so the first, the existing stories would be Unit 1, and that's a unit that Mr. Solano currently rents to, his cousin, his family. The new dwelling unit, his intent at this stage would be to lease that to his daughter, who's the oldest of eight, who's graduating college this spring semester out of LA, she'd like to be coming back to Boston.
Do you want her living in the basement?
Well, he said nice basement. I used to live in a basement.
And, and do you have window wells?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. In fact, as you'll hear from Mr. Yoder, who's a local resident, this use, there's no essential objection to the two-family, there's not, as far as I understand, no objection to actually living space in the basement. The primary point of opposition is really a design and layout disagreement where he's okay with living space in the basement, but prefers that it not be a standalone dwelling unit, that a portion of the new unit, including the kitchen, the primary living area, be on the first floor with secondary living area in the basement. So, I'd suggest the point of opposition is primarily based on an interior design and layout. The, I'd suggest this is a opportunity to introduce a dwelling unit in the city, which the city wants and needs. It would be an opportunity to introduce that in a great neighborhood, in a great city, and it's a studio-level unit, which are, quite frankly, they're very favorable and in many parts of the city valuable. It would be new construction, meaning newly, you know, new work in the basement, it would be code-compliant, and it would be safe, and I'd suggest a very suitable place, a dwelling unit, especially for a younger individual. And as far as the community process goes, we have had at least two obuders meetings, and we did meet with the Mount Hope Civic Association. Mr. Yoder presented a laundry list of proposals and recommendations about the project. We addressed every single one of those and incorporated those designs. In fact, Mr. Solano went out and hired a new architect, Mr. Roach, in order to change the plans, and to come up with a better plan, and to address many of the community points. So, the only point that remains outstanding is really the one regarding the interior layout. So, I'd suggest to this board that it focus on the intent of the code and answer these questions. Does this proposal promote the character of this residential neighborhood? I'd suggest the answer to that is yes, in terms of density, in terms of how do you fight the design. Is it an appropriate use to the existing environment? I'd suggest the answer to that is yes. This area is surrounded by two families, and even some three families and a single family, it abuts a two-family, a very large two-family zone, and also whether this prevents overdevelopment. I'd say the answer to that is also yes, again, by introducing another dwelling unit without adding any mass or density. And if I, if the board would allow Mr. Solano just to explain why it is he wants this proposal to be allowed.
I'm okay. I just need to move, okay, thank you. How are the plans? Mr. Trindell? Any questions from the board?
So, I'm, I'm looking at A1. You have proposed studio apartment plan, but drawings appear to be one-bedroom, or two-bedroom, bedroom one, bedroom two? I'm sorry, bedroom one, bedroom one.
Oh, there's two bedrooms.
So, how is the studio if it's a two-bedroom?
I'm sorry?
How is this a studio apartment if it's showing two bedrooms?
It's how you define it.
Well, my definition of a studio would be no bedrooms. I think that's pretty common, right? So, to add two bedrooms probably takes away from the term studio.
Well, yeah.
Right? So, it's not a studio, it's a two-bedroom?
Yep, okay.
Well, I don't think it's semantics, I think it's either a studio or it's a, or a two-bedroom, right?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, that's our job here.
Can I, can I just comment on that, if I may?
I'll defer to the chair.
We, we started with this, we took this project over, and the layout, it's generous. So, we believe that there's room for two bedrooms there. They're more than adequate, they're 15 by, by 10. Now, I'd like to address one more point. I believe that every, I, I don't believe in putting people into an environment that isn't healthy and provides air. So, whenever we have an opportunity, I like to use a full sliding door to allow sunlight and air to move.
But again, all, all things considered, I mean, so, we're talking material walls that are making two bedrooms, right? I mean, you're talking about sliding doors and natural light, which is all well and good. I guess what I'm trying to get my, my head around is, you were talking about a studio, you would mention that this possibly something that is desired by the neighbors and the area, and it would be conducive to that. And we see the plans, it's a two-family, really just trying to understand if it's, what it is.
And you're, you're right, and apologies for misspeaking on the description. I mean, what we are proposing is what's in the plans, and that does call for two bedrooms. I guess when I, when I was thinking studio, I was thinking more of a basement-level style of unit. So, again, and I know it is more than semantics, but we're proposing what's, what's in that plan, and certainly amend the plan accordingly to strike that studio designation at ISD to make, so, we're all in the same age.
So, that's, that's what you, um, one of the barriers you're facing is that you always look to one's history as a neighbor, a good, a good neighbor history. And, you know, from some of the information we've received, is that there have been problems with this property, as far as the number of vehicles are concerned, as far as the dumpster being on property, as far as the management of the residents in the building, you know, and, and the fact that it's not owner-occupied, you know? In a neighborhood that I think tries, correct me if I'm wrong, tries to promote homeownership in, in a number of ways, you know? So, that's the barriers you face, because, you know, past, past performance is indicative of future performance, and if, and if it's, you know, you know, an inability to control the tenants in the past, that's not going to improve perhaps in the future. So, I just lay that, I just put that out to you, because, you know, we are really concerned about the way our neighborhoods grow, and that in fact, just like the previous case, we want to ensure that abutting residents have an access to peace and tranquility when they're in their homes. So, I, I put that out, that you can respond, please.
Yes, when, Mr. Solano just purchased this about a year and a half ago, and I understood from speaking to Counselor Campbell's office that this had been, and I've learned since dealing with Mr. Yoder and other residents, this was a problem property. It had been in foreclosure for years, there was no maintenance, there was no upkeep, the neighbors had no idea who was living there, coming and going. That's changed, and I don't know if there's a letter, I haven't seen anything recent, but we've interacted with the community, and I understand, and maybe even Mr. Yoder would attest to this, that Mr. Solano, who owns it individually, not in an LLC or otherwise, has-
Do you own other property?
Yes, well, the house where I live, and another-
What's that parents' house?
It's Boston.
You own, is that a one-family or two-family?
No, it's a mixed-use.
Oh, okay.
But I live on, on the second floor.
Okay, cool, okay.
I understand, so, as I understand, those concerns all predate Mr. Solano's ownership, and he's since brought into, it's more transparent, he's really been taking care. In fact, if, if, on page five of the packet, I tried to show some graphics of the investments he's made, he's done some very nice interior renovations to the first and second story, he's painted the home, and we've agreed as part of this proposal, and these are things he would likely be doing anyway, removing the chain-linked fence, removing the existing tree, planting two separate new trees, adding shrubs, and these are all, again, where he's really trying to improve this property that's had been a problem.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
And we do have a letter of support, I believe it's been, Mr. Coppinger has a copy of that for the record, and that's of the local.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Coppinger from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in opposition of this project. Unfortunately, they have not been able to receive enough community support from the Mayor's Office to fully support this project. That being said, they did receive, like the attorney said, a letter of support from a neighbor who lives on Stella Road.
An owner-occupied?
Is that a-
It was, was the obudder owner, an owner-occupant, or?
That is a good question.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Yoder.
Yes, hi. Rick Yoder, from Mount Hope Street.
Can you please speak up?
I'm sorry, yes, Rick Yoder from Mount Hope Street and co-chair of the Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association. I won't read this whole statement, it's pretty long, but just to clarify some of that, it is true, there was a former owner who was a very bad landlord before the current owner, and he tried to build out the basement into apartment without any permits. We asked the ISD to look into it, they shut him down. There's still a lot of work that was done, and permits were never taken out for, boilers, gas boiler, electric service change, and then, and then our new owner took over, and I don't have, we haven't had the same kind of complaints we had, I had it before. So, I wouldn't put that on him, though, you know, we're going forward now.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I also agree, we don't really, we don't oppose a two-family unit. There are a number, it's a single-family district, but there are already a number of two and three-family homes, so, it's a little hard to oppose it now. But my concern is the basement unit, and, and I wanted to say a few of this. In Rosendale, basement units are forbidden by the zoning code, as in about half of Boston neighborhoods. And I think the distinction, because I know there's a lot of them, people say in the South End and Back Bay, but a lot, most of those you can walk out the back, it's not a true basement. This is a complete basement, totally underground, except for little slot windows around, and, and it's our feeling that no one should have to choose between having a place to live, a place to live, and no visual contact with the outdoor surroundings while at home. But, they could, by code, by zoning code, you could put the sleeping and bathroom areas in the basement, that's acceptable, as long as the living and dining areas are above ground. And I included in my handout-
So, you know, how about this? We're not going to redesign the project, you know, so tell us, you know, the proposal before us is for a conversion from a one to a two-family, and that conversion would occur through occupancy of the basement as, as a complete unit. So, tell us about your, your thoughts just on what's before us, rather than redesigning the, the space.
I'm sorry, my hearing isn't great, you want me to-
Neither is mine, so that's great, a great combination here.
You want me to say?
So, so, so you are, what is your opposition based on?
On the, well, one, it's a violation of the zoning code.
Okay.
And I think it's a disservice to any tenant going in there, if their whole dwelling has no windows, that you can look out and see the surrounding neighborhood. They are going, the, the owner is going to build out window wells that have the proper amount of light coming in, but that light, if you look out those windows, all you see is a little bit of sky.
So, you're, you're concerned about the zoning violation, and you're concerned from a, from a resident perspective, I mean, a resident off that basement unit?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Well, just that it's actually fairly simple to make a design change. I've already shared the designs with the architect, and it's really not that big a deal.
So, thank you, thank you. So, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
And I don't mean to interrupt, but if we strongly urge approval, considering there is opposition, if there was a motion to deny, we'd ask that we made without prejudice. That's an agreement, so that we could potentially make a work, come up with a workaround.
Okay.
That being said, I strongly urge approval, thank you. Please.
If I may, Madam Chair.
And I'm only letting you off this time, we do not require, we do not encourage, encouragement as to what the, what our vote should be, okay? It's getting the end of the day, help us get out of here. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial without a break.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, I think this project has merit, just now start.
Yes. Is all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Every discussion is regulated.
So, I will, hold on one minute. What I'd like to see is that this owner demonstrates good neighborliness, you know, because that's going to be really, really important, that, that whatever you do to the property, happens sooner rather than later, okay? Thank you. I'm sorry, the meeting is not adjourned, we still have a number of items ahead of us.
Thank you. This one. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. We will take a five-minute break.
Gentlemen, wait for occasion.
Um, we will--
No, we don't need to.
Okay, so we will proceed with the rest of the agenda.
This was the zoning advisory subcommittee that met on November 21st, Thursday, 2019. First case, BOA 981-595, 1531 Center Street, was to extend the first-floor unit of a two-family residential into basement, having four rooms. It was approved. Case BOA 991-573, 18 Casper Street, was to extend living level into the attic area and create one living level. It was approved. Case BOA 997-186-70 Fletcher Street, was to remove window on the third floor, with a new door and deck, install a 60-inch diameter spiral staircase. It was, sorry, it's going to be heard on February 13th, 2019, at the subcommittee. Case BOA 1004-846, 2R Perham, it was a renovated total home from fire. In addition, it was approved. Case BOA 984-586, 11 Robbins Street, was a renovated kitchen, adding a full bathroom. It was approved. Case BOA 977-602, 56 Russett Road, proposed to have an addition of a dormer and attic level, extended living area, it was approved. Case BOA 999-433, 44 Zeller Street, was to place an existing deck, rear of the two-story addition, it was approved. Case BOA 991-005-6, Martinwood Road, was constructed carport and rear mudroom, it was approved. Case BOA 987-407, 10 Draper Road, was to extend living space to the basement and extend single-family dwelling, was approved. Case BOA 993-725, 123 Glendower Road, was to legalize the existing work in basement and install new windows. It was approved. Case BOA 100-1324, 11 Walter Street, was a change of occupancy from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling and workshop, it was approved. Case BOA 934-040, 33 Moultrie Street, was adding a full bathroom to the basement, it was approved. Case BOA 100-1591, 1664 to 1668 Dorchester Avenue, was to change occupancy from a cafe to deek daycare, it was approved. Case BOA 989-792, 15 to 17 Tovar Street, it was a driveway curb cut, it was approved. BOA 984-307, 302 to 316 Bowden Street, remove proviso for the takeout for this petitioner only, it was approved, with the new proviso for that takeout only for that petitioner. Case BOA 997-066, 34 Midland Street, repair landings, extend living space to the basement, it was approved. BOA 979-443, 78 Harborview Street, was to construct a new side addition, kitchen expansion of a existing two-family, it was approved. Case BOA 100-3971, 26 Jamaica Street, was to confirm occupancy of the one-family dwelling and renovate interior and bathroom and bump out. It was approved. Case BOA 100-093-0963, 4 Noble Court, was to confirm occupancy of the single-family dwelling and add a rear deck, it was approved. Madam Chair, at this point, we need an approval from the full committee board.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations I've read.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned.